I call this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, May 2 of 2023. It is 6 o'clock. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Prager.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mary Hewson.
I hear.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Mr. Mendosa.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, and our invocation this evening will be given by Robert Gutierrez from St. John's Catholic Church. He is an ordained deacon there.
Let us begin. By our heads, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord Jesus Christ, for your continued blessings. We ask that you continue to watch our mayor and the council as they are given the great opportunity to be humble servants. We ask that you continue to bless them, that you send them down the gift of, the gift of knowledge and wisdom, Lord, so that they have this, may have this knowledge so that they can turn to God when they're asked to give decisions and make decisions that are based on human factors. We ask that you give them the not, the gift of wisdom so that they may continue to be able to search in their hearts and their souls when they're making all these things that they're called to do. We ask that you watch over them, that you protect them and keep them safe. And we ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would you all join me in the pledges of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. All right. We will now begin our citizen comment time period, and it's our citizen comment time period. The city council welcomes speakers at regular meetings. Persons wishing to speak during the citizen comment period needed to sign up at the clerk's office today prior to 5:45, or to email citizencomment@sanmarcustx.gov prior to noon to sign up, or to sign up to do online, in which case you'll get a link and a call-in number. Speakers may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic, we ask that you not repeat the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You have three minutes to speak when you state your name. A timer is going to be displayed on the screen, as you all can see it on both of the screens here. You start in the green, and the countdown begins. When you have 20 seconds left, you'll be in the yellow part of the timer, and when the timer is red, your time to speak is up, and we have now added a bell. And the mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal assaults, profanity, or threats of violence. And we have a number of people wishing to speak tonight, so it's going to help for those who are in person to go ahead. I know it takes a while to get out of the, the middle of the seats, so if you'll be working your way up to this side and, and getting a line behind the microphone. The first five, we have Sassy Youngstrom, Tyler Adams, Katie Carter, Mary Beth Harper, followed by Sherri Levine Boyet. And if you will, please state your name for the record, and we will begin.
Sassy Youngstrom. Is this on?
Sassy Youngstrom. Oh, it's on now. Great. Thank you.
Mayor Hewson and city council members, thank you for giving me an opportunity to make a few comments. I also thank God for giving me a voice. My name is Sassy Youngstrom, and I am here on behalf of many San Marcos residents to talk about ethics, the revelation of integrity. Monoamiga, an organization that employs council member, a council member, submitted a petition with over 1,400 signatures designed to repeal the San Marcos police contract. City council then approved a resolution to repeal the contract in a four-three vote on February 7. Article 12, general provisions, section 12.02 of the city charter. Personal interest and code of ethics says, and I'm going to read this because it's a quote, and I don't want to mess it up. "It is the policy of the city of San Marcos that all city officials and employees shall act and conduct themselves both inside and outside the city service so as to give no occasion for distrust for their integrity, impartiality, or of their devotion to the best interests of the city of San Marcos and the public trust which it holds." Close quote. There is no question that partiality was at play for the vote on the police contract. So can you tell me why the council member Garza was allowed to vote on this issue when she is a paid employee of Monoamiga? Noting integrity, no council member should participate in voting on issues where there exists a conflict of interest. Clearly, this was a contract, conflict of interest. So in the business world, there are occasions when an OCI, which is an organizational conflict of interest document, is required, and that ensures there's no impropriety in the execution of a contract. Better said, someone who is paid by Monoamiga should not be voting on Monoamiga interests. I am a citizen of San Marcos and not the only constituent to be concerned. In lieu of filing an ethics violation complaint form, a response on how this issue will be addressed is appreciated. In closing, I am reminded that integrity reflects ethics. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Tyler Adams.
Mayor, and honorable members of the council, my name's Tyler Adams, and I reside at 1111 Avalon Avenue here in San Marcos. I would like to first thank you all for the opportune, opportunity to speak today regarding the issue pertaining to the eviction delay ordinance. I have been a property manager here in San Marcos for about two years now, and I would like to express why I believe that the, the eviction delay is no longer benefiting the majority of the population. I did send, submit a letter explaining this in, in more detail than I am able to express today in the three minutes, and can, and have copies if anyone would like any of those. But to summarize the letter that I did submit, I believe that the 90-day eviction moratorium is now only benefiting those who are abusing the system, from my time doing collections, delinquency, all that, both here and, and other areas. It's, sorry, let me go back. At this time, there are no longer companies laying masses of people off for, for COVID, and there's, there's no lack of jobs hiring at this time. It's, COVID's no longer causing people to lose work, and therefore that 90-day hold should no longer be in place. In my opinion, it is now guarantee, more so guaranteeing the fact that these individuals will be under eviction, because by the time this 90 days is up, then the three days is up, they now have three to four months of back rent being owed, which no one is able to, to pay in full, whereas going back to pre-COVID times, there's just the three-day notice at which they reach out, and we were able to work with people in that timeframe to help them get caught back up. But now, when people are ignoring us for the 90 days and then reaching out two hours before their eviction hearing, we can't set up a payment plan when they're already behind four months of rent. To conclude, I ask that a vote to remove the 90-day hold be held, and we allow the city of San Marcos to take another step in returning to normalcy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Carter. Is Katie Carter here? I'll circle back and call her at the end.
In, in Zoom.
Wait, wait.
It says Zoom.
Oh, well, it says in person or Zoom. Ms. Trevino, do we have?
No.
Okay. Well, I'll still circle back when we finish. Thank you. Mary Beth Harper, who is in person with us.
Okay. I'm Mary Beth Harper, and I live in the Martindale ETJ. Okay, I'm speaking about the San Marcos truck terminal. There's no air or rail in the development agreement, so it's not really a smart terminal. Plus, it's not very smart anyway. Okay, thank you to the city council for postponing the vote on the zoning change to July 3. This will allow the city to carefully consider the terms of the development agreement for this huge tract of land. None of y'all will be affected by this heavy industry zoning. Okay, you will not have to live with noise, dust, and light pollution. You will not have to live with increased truck traffic day and night. You will not have to live with increased risk of flooding, because all that farm land is being converted to 70% to 90% of purpose cover. Your drinking water will not be affected. There are many, many shallow alluvial wells in this area. They'll be affected by both the industrial runoff and the cut and fill. Okay, the cut and fill should be reduced to eight feet to follow the previous smart agreement. Okay, the roads in the area are all two-lane country roads, except for Highway 80. They are not built for heavy truck traffic. These roads are shared with school buses, farmers, and commuters. This is just an accident waiting to happen. By the way, there's several cemeteries near this area. You may have family members who are buried there, and who may not be able to rest in peace. Okay, I personally would ask that the entire council renegotiate the development agreement, the entire council, not the staff nor the little small group. People working in groups have better ideas, and you're better at reasoning and decision-making. And also, please follow your existing city development rules.
Next is Sherri Boyet. And let me call the next five. We'll have some, we'll have a person on Zoom, followed by Noah Brock, Anna Juarez, Diane McGregor, and Joy Youngers. If y'all will go ahead and start lining up over here near the podium. Ms. Boyet, the floor is yours.
Sherri Boyet, good evening, mayor and city council. I'm the vice chair of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee and the Hayes County-appointed animal advocate advisor. Several things to consider tonight. The regional animal shelter just posted on Facebook that they are enormously overcapacity and currently have 178 dogs and 67 cats. The Animal Shelter Advisory Committee meeting was held last Wednesday. There was inadequate audio setup again, and the Zoom meeting, the Zoom meeting connectivity failed again. A request at the advisory committee meeting was made for the reinstatement of the volunteers' Facebook page. I request to this council that the Facebook page be reactivated now to improve community engagement and to hopefully increase volunteerism. Regional inter-local outreach. A subcommittee at the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee was established to exchange, interact, to interact with everyone in the region. The subcommittee to create recommendations for policy to build consistency and support the regional animal shelter. A city webpage should be developed, which will communicate, educate, and receive feedback. Create communication plans with all jurisdictions. Establish a channel and a communication plan for updates that may trigger questions from the community, such as the recent missing dog incident. The county judge's office has been fielding many calls about this incident. This was not shared during the advisory committee meeting. This could have been an excellent opportunity to inform the partners and prepare all jurisdictions for questions that are arising from the community. The county was not prepared and was not informed. This page would communicate and explain all other city and couns, county animal welfare ordinances, an additional page that highlights animal welfare ordinances with a matrix to provide services within the county, especially for the TNR. As a member of the Concerned Animal Shelter Advisory Committee outreach, we would request that there be seven days a week posts from the marketing position, and have those be one or two times a day, including video, so that they would be shared out in Wimberley and Dripping Springs. Increase communication, increase supervision, and let Summer's disappearance not be in vain. Instead, please increase the emphasis on the adoption program outreach. Expedite the two adoption counselors, and the shelter needs adequate leadership and management emphasis on daily frequent evaluations. Staffing must be reviewed to ensure they are supported to the highest probability of success. Life-saving animal services can happen if we all work together. Shelter, shelter diversion, the planning for a county pet resource center is still a few years away, and it's not going to solve the capacity issues that now for the San Marcos inferior management and inadequate programming. We need to have all the steps in place. There was a story on TV last week that revealed back in September, a dog named Summer was not accounted for in the adoption trailer. Based on how the article was written, people are assuming that she died, resulting from an employee's negligence, and then the employee resigned. Is there an ongoing investigation, and will any of the employees be held accountable? Where is the transparency? Where was the supervision and leadership? Thank you.
Next is Ms. Capaletta, who will be joining us on Zoom.
Angels just earned their wings, y'all. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capaletta. They call me LMC. I'm duly noting that the mayor is not following her own rules of decorum, allowing people to clap, and I think it's a cover-up because she allowed them to clap when it was an anti-Alyssa Garza speech. Leaflets drops begin in Blanco Gardens tomorrow to let the residents know that there is a lateral flood oppression occurring right now with leadership on the dais, and I'm also concerned, when it comes to ethics, reviewing some of your campaign contributions. I would say that we cannot make decisions off of fear of the county in terms of the smart terminal. The definition of fear appeal is when basis fear is employed in an excessive or exaggerated way to persuade others to accept or adopt a behavior. There are no scientific studies that the speeches from Smurf, which are Band-Aids on trauma wounds, will solve the harms that all of these residents have spoken about. Most of you have never spoken at a public hearing. You were installed through however we do things in politics, and I've never seen you have the passion and the care for your community to sit in that chamber like these residents have been doing for years and years. Please ensure that all of the city council members, like Mr. Garcia, Mr., I'm sorry, like Saul, like Alyssa, and like, who was the other one? And Mr. Scott are engaged, as well as the city of Martindale residents and those of the city of Martindale, who sent a letter which should be read on live TV opposing the smart meter, smart terminal. People are being directly impacted, and they never elected you. You are playing God in their hands. Jude, you did the right thing when it came to the woods, and you saw what happened, and it's behind me. And I'm shocked the individual who lives in the woods is not standing strong with the residents of this community of Martindale. We still do not know the bottom line, drive-out cost of wastewater infrastructure, the fire station, everything else that this costs will entail, because the city staff are refusing to give us that information. And it's probably because the developer doesn't know what he's going to do, or he's not being transparent. There should be strict fines of up to $10,000 a day if they don't follow our rules. There should also be, in addition to that, they should shut off any sort of water infrastructure. You guys can't even control the wastewater out of a tortilla plant or an apartment complex here in our community. How do you think something like this will roll out for the community? I say unless you tell us how much this is going to cost, you don't know, because we all know this developer will go away if we don't pay for it. And everybody in that room who's paid the property taxes, of which many of you have broken your promise of being fiscal conservatives, do you want us to pay for his? Because that's basically what's happening, right? We're going to front the money for a developer when we don't even know the ecological and health impacts of that development. I'm about to earn my angel's wings. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Our next speaker is Noah Brock.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name's Noah Brock, and I'm here to talk about the smart terminal development agreement. I want to first thank you for voting to delay and voting to discuss this, because this is the first time we've actually had that ability. And we really think that this means that the community can make this better along with council. So I want to go through some items that are in the presentation tonight for item 14. And it goes through all the community requested amendments, but there's some specifics that I wanted to clarify. Slide 17, cut and fill. Again, this says cut and fill has to be administratively approved, but the development agreement states by right. These are two very different things, but they're both in the development agreement. Which one is it? Slide 18, we put together the Parkland acreage recommendation of 264 acres based on the fact that 660 acres were removed from the cotton center development. The majority of that acreage was for residential plats. This development is also taking over another roughly 400 acres that could easily be residential. Slide 20, noise reduction. There are many studies about long-term effects of high levels of noise pollution. In general, it's accepted that noise levels below 70 decibels will not cause long-term damage. This is how we came to that 70-decibel limit. Also, keep in mind that decibel, the scale is not linear, it's logarithmic. That means a 10-decibel level reduction cuts the loudness in half. We urge you all to initiate review of the development agreement. We did not put all these items together overnight. It took us nearly three months to gather all of this information and itemize it and rank it to give it to you. We polled every single person that we could talk to in the area. We did the community outreach that we wished the developer had done. We came to every city council meeting since we found out about this. We were here before the developer, and we're here to stay. This is such a large project that it warrants input from all city council members. We also want to have the ability to explain our requests if needed. Everyone interprets things differently. We need to have meaningful conversations about how these things are interpreted. It's not just me saying things for three minutes and then you writing them down. We need to have some back and forth. We are dedicating our time to help improve this project so that we can really be proud of this. It's not something that should be rushed through, and it's on your agenda tonight, so I hope you will consider all of those things. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anna Juarez.
My name is Anna Juarez, and I live at 342 New Berry Trail. Dear mayor, city council members, and city staff, as I said earlier, thank you for agreeing to delay consideration of the zoning change for the smart terminal and for taking the time to carefully consider the largest and most complicated development agree, agreement to ever come before the city. It means a lot to me and to others in the community to know that you all listen and seriously consider citizen perspectives. That said, I encourage you to allow a space for the entire council, not just a council subcommittee, and ask that you facilitate communication between council, the community, and the developers to work together, initiate a thorough review of the development agreement, and continue discussion and collaboration with all interested parties. This development agreement is over three miles long and is about the size of 75 outlet malls. We appreciate the council's willingness to amend the agreement but are concerned about possible rollbacks or waivers in the future. For something this massive, city council needs to get it right for the community. How will the city guarantee that all current or future owners and lessees of the property be required to adhere to the development agreement? Will the city add a clause or use some other method to acquire public hearings and notifications and guarantee that requests for changes go to the Planning and Zoning Commission? As you proceed, please include some type of guarantee that these amendments will be honored in the future. Honestly, I'm super excited about the possibility of what council, community, and developers might accomplish when we work together on an HI manufacturing terminal. What if San Marcos helped reimagine what economic developments might look like in the future, carefully weighing the needs for profits, neighbors, and the environment? Earlier this afternoon, I was happy to hear council member Mark Gleason speak up regarding local residents' need for the Yuland Road quiet zone improvements, and hope that all of you can bring this type of concern to the residents being affected by SMART. Again, I want to thank all council members for engaging in the messy process of democratic governance. I look forward to getting answers to the many questions still pending. Thanks for taking the time. We all need to make sure San Marcos ends up with the development agreement that gets it right for now and for the future. Thank you.
Diane McGregor.
Diane McGregor. My name's Diane McGregor. I live at 140 Ladybug Lane, Martindale, Butterfly Meadows subdivision. First, I'd like to thank the mayor, the council, and the staff for their courtesy and attention through all of these long meetings concerning the smart terminal. I'm truly grateful for your time and consideration. And now, I'd like to know how many of you all have visited all of the parts of the smart development that has roads into it, anyway? Well, I know I hadn't. We live real close by, and we're surrounded by the development, but I got curious. So we drove out to 1984, and out to Valley View, and then to Valley Way Drive, because that was the part of the development that's being discussed for zoning. It's very accessible. It's also called County Road 238, and it's a dirt road, and it seems to be well-maintained. And when we lived in Pecan Plantation Mobile Home Park for 15 years, we used to ride our bicycles down this road all the way to Maxwell. It was fun, and we had to watch out, because there was sometimes longhorn cattle on the road, and you don't want to tangle with them. Basically, there's nothing much out there but agriculture. There's not many homes, but there are more homes now than there was 15 years ago. The drought isn't doing it any favors. But still, it's real nice and quiet. But it won't be for long, not after Franklin Mountain gets their way. Who knows what will be out there? It's right there on that dirt road. This side's Franklin Mountain. That side's agricultural homes and buildings. But one more thing, because, just because there's an empty, quiet land does not mean that something has to be built on it. Why not just let it be quiet and empty? Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Joy Youngers is next, but after her will be Ezra Reynolds, Kay Moore, Maxfield Baker, Annie Donovan, and Olivia Fetal. Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne Solis. I've got really small print here. I'm having trouble reading. Joanne will be immediately after Joy Youngers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joy Youngers. I live in Martindale, and I own property in San Marcos. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you again for delaying your decision regarding the zoning change. The request to more than double the heavy industrial zoning of the smart terminal does not meet San Marcos' zone change approval criteria. According to San Marcos' comprehensive plan, the additional acreage the developer would like rezoned is in a low-intensity zone on the city's preferred scenario map. Heavy industrial zoning is not consistent, nor is it compatible with the surrounding residential and agricultural character of the area. Portions of the additional acreage are located in the flood plain or the floodway. Two parcels are squarely on top of Morrison and Hemp Hill Creeks, which empty into the San Marcos River, and one parcel overlaps a portion of Martindale's wellhead protection area. There is no market or needs assessment for an industrial park. There have been no jobs promised by the developer. He has no prospective tenants or clients, or even plans to utilize rail or air service. There's no substantiated reason or demonstrable need for industrial zoning. The developer has, has non-committally stated he may be here for 20 or 30 years. This is not in writing, and there is really no reason to believe he won't flip it once he has city services and high zoning in place. The development agreement states outside storage may be as high as 80 feet. Shipping containers will be stacked almost as tall as Texas State's Old Main Building, taller than Caldwell County Courthouse. taller than Caldwell County Courthouse, taller than any surrounding trees, and will be visible from I-35, from Loop 110, from Highway 80 and Highway 142. This will be an absolute blight on San Marcos. There is a plaque posted on County Road 101 telling us that this area is the longest continuously inhabited area in all of North America. The reason for that is our cool, clean river. I am all for progress, but imagine losing our most precious natural resource for few trucking jobs when you have Amazon, HEB, Mensor, Widlight, et cetera, all offering the same thing, when the city of San Marcos has 46 available positions alone. Mayor and council, not a single local citizen has spoken in favor of the SMART terminal. Please don't dig the hole deeper. The developer should establish himself as a good neighbor, a good steward of the environment, a good landlord with responsible tenants for the original 880 acres before rezoning any additional acreage. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Our next speaker is Joanne Salas. Yeah, I missed her earlier. Joanne Salas, you're the next speaker. Just move that microphone where you need it, ma'am.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor Houston and City Council. My name is Joanne Salas. First of all, thank you for postponing the first reading of the SMART development zoning request until July 3, and for taking the time to discuss changes to the development agreement that the community is asking for. The residents who will be next-door neighbors to this huge development have spent numerous hours researching and developing the requested changes. As we all know, this heavy industrial development is not compatible with the surrounding community. The changes we are asking for are designed to help protect the health of the residents in the area, wildlife, and the environment. I won't go over the specific details because you've heard them before and you also have them. I do have three additional asks this evening. One is that you vote to have the entire city council renegotiate the SMART development agreement. The project will have enormous impact on San Marcos and our surrounding communities. Having the entire council at the negotiating table will result in a more democratic and representative outcome for how this project proceeds. Ideally, you would also include community members in the negotiation process. A second ask is that the renegotiated development agreement include a clause prohibiting future amendments that would loosen any restrictions put in place to protect the residents and environment. The reason for this ask is because we don't know that either this developer or a future developer may not come before a future council and ask for amendments that would loosen the restrictions that people have worked really hard and are hoping get included in this agreement. And the third issue is one that was raised at the last council meeting about part of this land having a history of major contamination, of being a superfund site. As I understood it, there are many unknowns, such as the extent of testing, the location of contaminants, and how they were contained, or how long the contaminants posed a threat. Without this knowledge, this development runs the risk of re-releasing the toxins into the water, farmland, and the river. This would be devastating to people, animals, and the environment. I hope we can all agree that this issue needs to be resolved before we move forward with this project. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Ezra Reynolds.
Good evening. My name is Ezra Reynolds, and I live at 332 Perry Street in San Marcos. Since I found out about SMART back in February, me and several members of the San Marcos community and beyond have been working hard, researching, showing up to meetings, hosting town halls going door-to-door, and delivering outreach to all the communities that will be impacted by the SMART terminal so that we, the community, can be heard and our concerns taken seriously. Up until the last council meeting, I felt those efforts were in vain. So, I would like to thank everyone on the council for listening to your constituents and delaying your decision until July 3. Regardless of the outcome of this enormous historical heavy industrial project, at least the community knows that your decision was not done in haste. Onto the development agreement, I have a few questions and concerns about the development agreement. How can you protect our above-ground and underground water sources? This question is really important due to SMART's proximity to the river and its impact on residents' well water, and also because Texas environmental codes are so lax that you can't rely on those codes to protect our sacred river. Ask anyone from the RGV or Boca Chica how well Texas environmental standards protect our environment. I don't want San Marcos to join the news along with all the other disasters. You need to learn what the protections are and add them to the development agreement. After learning about the superfund site, I want there to be an investigation on the reach of that contamination and what that will look like with the cut and fill. Who is responsible for that research and that information, and will the community ever know? Another issue I'm worried about is the sense of urgency a few people sitting on council have. Why is there a rush? I ask that everyone please take your time when working on the development agreement and ask questions with the community and the environment in your minds. Please don't make knee-jerk decisions. Every time we come to these meetings, after the community speaks, you all learn more and also ask more critical questions. Finally, how binding is this development agreement? Can there be amendments made by the developers later on, like we are doing now? If so, will the public be notified of these changes? Is there something that can be included in this agreement that makes it more binding, or is everything in this agreement a placeholder for later negotiation without the community? Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Kay Moore.
Hello, my name is Kay Moore. I live on 452 Valley Way Drive, Maxwell, Texas, on a family farm that I grew up on. I'm speaking for the land. Tonight, we are considering 2,000 acres of prime land that is a significant piece of the San Marcos River watershed in our area. What we allow here will affect runoff and the river. It will affect human, wildlife, and bird habitat. It is 2,000 acres of farmland, grassland, riparian zone, and watershed. It's home to a large diversity of birds, animals, pollinators, food chains, and plant life. It grows trees, brush, grasses, wildflowers, and crops, plants that slow down water flow and prevent and mitigate erosion, helping to hold on to precious soil, soil that soaks up rain, holds water, filters runoff, and grows plants which sustain wildlife and people. This is a large project, 2,000 acres, now twice the size of the original. We need to act to ensure that we protect that which is most important, soil, water, watershed, whose riparian zones and wildlife corridors flow to the river. We will need to act to minimize and manage impervious cover, maximize water catchment, carefully manage water and pollution runoff, and in doing so, protect our river and its associated environments. We will need adequate buffer zones for its neighbors. As people neighbors, we're worried about light pollution, sound pollution, water pollution, air pollution, traffic, and our diminished horizons. Railroad containers from these is to the west. So much land and habitat has been lost and fragmented. American Farmland Trust reports that we lose 2,000 acres a day to development. It turns out, those of us who have worked hard to hold on to precious farm and grasslands are sitting ducks for electric and transmission lines, gas pipelines, water pipelines, road expansions, housing developments, electric generating plants, and heavy industrial development. Thoughtfully controlled development and restrictions will make a difference for the future of this land and watershed, for the river, and for its neighbors. What we do here can set better guidelines for future growth in projects. It will be your legacy and our children's inheritance. I urge you to carefully consider the community requested amendments to the development agreement and why citizen concerns in your decision-making. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maxfield Baker.
Hello, council. Good to see you again. I saw you all at 3, but I was a little further away. Good to see you in person. Yeah, so just to reiterate a little bit of what I said at that point, you all received legal advice. I hope that you asked tough questions of the legal advice that you were given, made sure that, you know, you didn't just sort of acquiesce to what they said. You know, as I know as a council member, it can be tough to challenge the staff's perceptions and opinions and recommendations, but that's inherently your job, right? Otherwise, we wouldn't need you, we would just rely on what they say, right? So, it's important that you feel empowered to ask important questions. And on that point, I ask that if you do decide to send this to the subcommittee, my preference, as most of the community has said, would be to have it have all of you negotiate with the developer. But if you do send it back to a subcommittee, I ask that at least two of the people who voted to postpone that this item are placed on that committee. Right now, the subcommittee includes folks that were already in favor of the development agreement, and so I think it would be a good sign of good-faith negotiations to change who sits on that committee, to make sure that our community members feel heard, and to also make room and space for them to be a part of those meetings as the mayor clarified the rules of engagement around those to allow for that for speakers when you set it up correctly, right? So, I really hope that you do that. I also wanted to kind of talk about, as the last speaker mentioned, this loss of farmland. You know, I know Councilmember Prater, this was something that was really important to you when we look at sustainability and how cities can remain relevant far into the future, right? And every time we lose farmland to this, every time we send the message to our community that farmland is less important than heavy industrial, we lose something that is part of San Marcos' rich history, right? And kind of on a fun note, I've talked to you all a lot about the SMART terminal. I am working on other stuff, and to that effect, we have the Summer in the Park coming up, June 1. I know the mayor loves that event. She's one of our fantastic donors that helps that happen every year. And so, we need more donors. If any of you all out in the crowd want to get involved with something lovely, Summer in the Park is something that we would love your assistance with. I'm going to be one of the head volunteer coordinators. I've been volunteering with Summer in the Park for, gosh, I want to say like eight years or something now, and it's a great time to get out there and meet new friends, get involved, and help keep this San Marcos tradition going. And at one point, you get to look out and see like a thousand smiling faces and dancing kids. It's super cute. So, shout out to Summer in the Park. We need volunteers. You can find more information on the Summer in the Park website. Anybody out there listening, please also show up. Also, I've been working within the Dunbar neighborhood to put together a Dunbar block party for our neighborhood. You know, block parties are a great way to meet your neighbors, help organize them, get them together. You know, it sounds like many of you from Kissing Tree are here, so you know the power of organizing our little neighborhoods. So, the Dunbar Block Party is going to be on June 24 from 3:30 to 7:00 p.m. We're partnering with the Calaboose, as well as the Cephas House, and many other nonprofits, and we look forward to seeing you there.
Our next speaker is Annie Donovan, followed by Olivia Vatal.
Good evening, council members. My name is Annie Donovan, and I want to thank each of you who voted to postpone the SMART zoning reading to July 3. It really means a lot to the community to feel heard and that you are listening. To those of you who voted not to postpone, I understand the pressure to rush through this, but I invite you to take a breath and slow down. SMART will become the largest continuously zoned property in the city of San Marcos and will be the largest development the city is seeing, considering its massive size. It is imperative that we look at this from all angles and as carefully as possible to guarantee that our future selves, residents, environment, and river are protected from the hazards and threat of heavy industrial manufacturing. As Friar Lawrence says to Romeo, "Wisely and slow, they stumble that run fast." And we all know what happened to Romeo. Today, your agenda brings the development agreement back to discussion. I hope that each of you took the time to review the presentation and packet that includes the community requested amendments. These are items that we, the community, and residents of San Marcos, Martindale, Reedville, and Maxwell have been working on tirelessly. In this evening's council meeting, city staff is asking for direction on how to proceed regarding development agreement negotiations. If it's decided that it needs to be reviewed... Excuse me. If it just... We are here today because there are issues with the development agreement that the council's SMART subcommittee worked on back in the fall of last year. We have also not seen any progress from city staff negotiations outside of a few last-minute and very minor concessions because we, the community, have been fighting for a seat at the table. The community would like to see the entire council be involved in the development agreement negotiations moving forward. A massive project such as SMART requires a massive amount of careful thought going into it, and we have mostly seen the opposite from both you and the developer. We have read the development agreement numerous times and have already expressed that the community cannot accept it as it is currently written. The true character of the area was not considered, and neither was the city's comprehensive plan. We deserve a citizen seat at the table if development agreement negotiations happen. I don't believe any of you currently live in the area that this massive project will encompass. I don't know if that's possible since it's in the ETJ. So, it's only natural to include the knowledge and expertise of those who currently live in the area in the discussion. Tonight, your decision is going to leave a lasting impact that will chart the course for the future of San Marcos. The citizens of San Marcos will not forget it. Please make the right one. Thanks.
Next is Olivia Vatal, and if Katie Carter has arrived, it will be Katie Carter's turn next. And, okay, go ahead.
I'm Olivia Vatal, and today, I'm kind of excited because we're going to see the staff presentation of the police department, and that's something that has been ongoing in my life for a while. So, that's really great. Also, I'm excited for you to see maybe how selfish some members of the police association are. The last meeting I attended, and you know, I grew up in the Stoner grips, so I know, you know, talking about getting out of trouble, like nobody's business. I saw that in them. I saw these men sit there and act like they were planning on how much trouble they could do on purpose and get written up for. That was just my interpretation. It was too close to home where we could just be drinking beers together. And talking about integrity and justice and ethics, I expect police meetings to be a little down-key. I don't expect people to be sitting up straight with their buttons on, you know, reaching for the guns or anything. But I expect, especially when these sort of things are attended by the community, for it to be a little less, you know, grossly about themselves. Of course it is, you know? Of course they want money, of course they want... And I agree. I agree the cops should be paid a very good salary, you know, for the area. So, I agree. But I just was not, as a citizen who has to live here, who has to be policed here, who, you know, I just have to be... I don't know, the cops are kind of great. He's kind of great. Mr. Sergeant Charles Wirth is kind of great. He's not one of the people I'm talking about, you know? But it just, that's the kind of thing that translates into coldness for me, like coldness for a situation, coldness for the killing of a human being that otherwise did not need to be shot or tasered. That's what I'm concerned about with my tiny bit of integrity that I have to talk about on the subject. Also, I wanted to inform everybody, yeah, I like to cause trouble and put up signs, but I did want to say that nuclear waste is not classified by the United States government or the Texas government as hazardous. So, that would be something that would fall into something allowable in our communities since we don't know what they're going to do in our communities. It's a good thing to know. Anyway, thank you all for your time.
Is Katie Carter here? Mr. Fino, I didn't see her online. Okay. So, this concludes the citizen comment part of our program. Counsel, oh, I'm sorry. Receive a staff presentation, Mr. Fino.
Okay, receive a staff presentation related to the ongoing meet-and-confer negotiations between the city and the San Marcos Police Officers Association, including explanation of considered reform policies and an update on negotiated contract parameters.
Ms. Reyes.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight's presentation is what we committed to bring to you at the beginning of the meet-and-confer process in February. We are hoping it will provide helpful insight and information to the community about the recent negotiations. provide helpful insight and information to the community about the recent negotiations between the city and San Marcos Police Officers Association. As a bit of background, we completed meet and confer negotiations in the fall of last year, and city council approved a three-year agreement between the city and the association on September 6, 2022. The city and the association believe that the former agreement was one that addressed key areas of interest and made considerable progress towards addressing some of the concerns we have heard. In state law, there is a process that allows residents of the community to gather signatures and submit a petition calling for the repeal of a meet and confer agreement. A group of citizens undertook that process to compel our council to either repeal the agreement or send the repeal question to the voters at the next regular election. Council decided to repeal the agreement effective June 7, 2023, and directed me to begin negotiations with the Police Officers Association on a new agreement to include the parameters provided by a majority of council. For meet and confer negotiations to be successful, a balanced set of interests must be kept at the forefront of the process. This means it is important to make strides in areas that are of mutual interest and benefit to both parties. In the proposed agreement, several key interests were successfully negotiated, such as doubling the amount of time to investigate and administer discipline. This is a progressive change not seen in many cities, and it is supported by both sides. We were also able to negotiate limiting the role of an arbitrator in substituting his or her judgment for that of the chief's in certain circumstances, as well as allowing for letters of reprimand to be considered during the promotional process. Many of the procedures followed by the police department today are codified in state law as prescribed by the Texas Legislature. Much has been said about these procedures. For example, officers are allowed to review body worn cameras during administrative internal review of their actions because it is required by law in the Texas Occupations Code. I'm proud of the hard work my team and representative members of the San Marcos Police Officers Association put into a new agreement negotiated in such a short amount of time. The new agreement is scheduled for council consideration on May 16. It is a robust agreement that takes into consideration interests of the city, the police department, and our community. I acknowledge that there are a lot of emotions and passion around these issues, and some community members are displeased that this agreement does not go further. Please know we have respectfully listened to interests from all perspectives and believe we have made measured progress in addressing the interests, even if the agreement does not include every request or demand. Again, it is important to recognize that negotiations are successful, are not successful if lines are drawn and there is no wavering from a list of set demands. Interest-based bargaining is critical to the overall meet and confer process, and limited progress can be made if it is adversarial in nature. This agreement must preserve a sense of pride in the professionalism of our officers while also calling for accountability. We acknowledge that there have been bad actors. We have diligently worked to improve the system, hold them accountable, and to be clear, we do not want them in our workforce. Yet, we must also recognize there is no perfect system, and we are bound to follow civil service law as applicable, which is very prescribed in how we administer discipline. In addition, we cannot lose sight of the fact that we have good men and women in the police department serving our city. It is important to recognize their hard work and dedication to our community. The chief is prepared to fully explain the benefits and significant progress made within this proposed agreement. It is my hope that the agreement will be approved in two weeks, so we can focus on other critical issues facing our community. These issues include: critical police staffing shortages, low police morale with record-high number of retirements, 150% increase in violent crime over the last decade, rapid growth in our inability to keep pace, the impact of new annexations on public safety, the growing mental health needs of our community, as well as traffic and pedestrian safety. Successfully negotiating these agreements consumes considerable time and resources. It also means we're not able to put more focus on bridging relationships within the community. I am thankful for and proud of the hard work that went into developing this new agreement. I'm hopeful that we can acknowledge the progress, begin to heal, and move forward. Chief Standridge and I will be providing the presentation tonight, and I will kick it off. Thank you.
First slide, Hayden.
So the first, the first part of this presentation is really just to kind of reorient everybody to the timeline. And so when we ended negotiations in September, we did go through and have a part in the agreement that meant that we would come back and talk about the role of the arbitrator. And so that was something we were still planning to do regardless of whether this agreement was repealed or not. So you'll see that in January, actually November, the petition to repeal the current agreement received by the city, the council voted to repeal the agreement with the effective date of June 7, so we had a limited amount of time to negotiate. And so the effective date of this new agreement that we will have before council in June, I'm sorry, in two weeks, will take effect in June, and that's the day after the other agreement will be repealed. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the Officers Association and the city team did have a provision in the agreement from the September 6 agreement that we would have good faith negotiations regarding the role of the arbitrator. So even though the petition was received by the city in November, and it was going through the certification process, and what council would then do as far as putting it on the ballot or repealing it outright, the POA did come to us and talk about, okay, let's go ahead and good faith, let's start talking about the role of the arbitrator. So we did that in January, and then we put a pause based on trying to understand where council was going to go on whether to go forward with the election or repeal of the agreement. So we resumed our discussions on March 9, and that was after council provided direction on parameters that you would like to see within a new agreement, and gave us the direction that you were going to go ahead and repeal the agreement, not send it to the voters for that particular agreement. So we had our last meeting, negotiations concluded on Monday, April 24, and we were able to work through some really key and significant issues that Chief Standridge is going to go through today in the next subsequent slides. So Chief Standridge.
Good evening, mayor, council, to our citizens. My name is Stan Standridge, and Beth and I have now been with the city of San Marcos for two years, five months, and 15 days. And I say that to qualify this statement. Abilene is our home. We're not going anywhere. I want to obey tumors out there. I said Abilene, didn't I?
You just said Abilene is my home.
Abilene is in the river, Mayor. San Marcos is home. I was just saying too long.
That should have been wise. Wise, our home.
Rewind. San Marcos is our home. Abilene was my home for 26 years. And I'm all, I'm very sincere when I say that. San Marcos is our home. If you don't know, Beth and I purchased a home in the city limits of San Marcos. We're vested and we're invested. And I have been very transparent with our citizens and with the selected body to tell you that in 2021, we spent an inordinate amount of time building strategies associated with the mental health, wellness, and resiliency of your police employees. The reason being is they have had remarkable trauma, beginning with their first line of duty death in 2017, Claudia being run over in 2019, three officers, one being killed in 2020, and then you had another officer, literally the following month, run over on I-35 again. That officer will never be a peace officer again. Then you had a very serious off-duty misconduct allegation associated with Ryan Hartman. And so this evening, we're going to talk about the proposed Hartman reforms. I just wanted to provide some foundational information. In 2021, we spent an inordinate amount of time trying to build systems for the wellness of our employees. In 2022, we began a laser beam focus on violent crime. As Ms. Reyes referenced, we have had 151% increase in violent crime in the last 10 years. It is not proportional to our increase in population. In fact, it's tripled the increase in our population. In the last decade, we've had 42% increase in people, 151% increase in violent crime. So it is my hope in 2023 that you all approve this agreement. This is a good agreement. And it is then my hope that we get busy doing the work of our citizens related to public safety. There is a ton of work to be done. So with that said, the proposed Hartman reforms, there were five. The first time I saw these, I believe, was in June of 2021. That's going to be relevant. First of all, they would like to see that the 180-day rule, as afforded by civil service law, be ended. They would like to see the end delay of interviews for misconduct, public transparency for personnel files, end third-party arbitration, and end vacation forfeiture as a substitute suspension. I'm going to take each of these individually and then give you and our citizens the negotiated outcome, where we landed and why we landed in that specific place as it relates to the negotiations. Next slide. So let's begin with the 180-day rule. I need to provide some clarifying information for the benefit of our citizens. Your police department and your fire department are civil service employees, meaning that there was a statute that was passed by the majority of the voters that implemented civil service protection for their first responders for police and fire. I believe this was done in the 1970s in the city of San Marcos. As such, a civil service employee is then governed by what's called Texas Local Government Code. And there's predominantly two chapters, Chapters 142 and 143, that govern how Chief Stevens and I administer the police department and the fire department. So we say we are civil service. We say we are a 143 agency. The 143 is a reference to Chapter 143 of the Texas Local Government Code. It's great reading material if you have insomnia. So I'm going to quote this, "In the original written statement and charges, and in any hearing conducted under this chapter, the department head may not complain of an act that occurred earlier than the 180th day preceding the date the department head suspends the firefighter or police officer." Now, our current agreement, the current agreement, I believe, is a good agreement. The reason being is it contemplated this issue. So this new agreement that you're going to consider for final adoption on June 8, it also is going to contemplate this issue, but we had already done this. And we were progressive in the fact that not many Texas cities have done what we have already accomplished in San Marcos. What did we essentially accomplish? We doubled the statutory provision of 180 days. Now, this can get really confusing really quick. If I become aware of alleged misconduct involving a San Marcos police officer, let's say the conduct stems from an allegation of harassment. I'm going to say a hypothetical, an ex-girlfriend. So this officer is alleged to have harassed an ex-girlfriend. One of the very first questions I'm going to ask is, do we know when this alleged harassment occurred? I'm going to probably have a pretty specific date, maybe because it may have been done by texting or some type of other type of harassing behavior. So we could have digital evidence. If I learn that the digital harassment occurred 30 days ago, then I have 180 days minus the 30. So I'm down to 150 days. What does the state law say? I have 150 days left to investigate the entire allegation, meet with the employee, and by the meet and confer contract, I have to meet with the employee probably three times, and dispose of the case, whether or not that's an indefinite suspension, a termination, a temporary suspension, a demotion, or some other form of non-discipline. So that 180 days in civil service law is a pretty tight timeline. So previously, we negotiated to double that, and the San Marcos Police Association said, we agree. We, and I think Ms. Reyes mentioned this, we, meaning the employees of the San Marcos Police Department, also do not want to work for people who are accused of serious misconduct. Those aren't the people that we want wearing our badge. So the San Marcos Police Association agreed, we need to double the allotted timeframe. So we did just that, and that's what that next paragraph says. The bottom paragraph says, also in our current agreement, we were able to negotiate for 300 days from the date of occurrence for sexual harassment and another 180 days for disposition. You may ask, why the 300? Because that's reflective of federal law. Next slide. Now, remind you, the Hartman, proposed Hartman reform is to end the 180-day rule, meaning there would be no timeline, no parameter associated with any of these types of complaints. So I had to contemplate from a management perspective, what would that look like on your police department? If the act is allegedly related to criminal activity, including the violation of a federal, state, or local law for which the firefighter or police officer is subject to criminal penalty, the department head may not complain of an act that is discovered earlier than 180th day preceding the date the department head suspends the firefighter. What does that mean? So the state legislature has already contemplated the issue of an alleged violation of law. And I'm going to use an example. There's an allegation against a peace officer of assault family violence. It's a criminal allegation. So we would confer with the district attorney. The legislature has said, you probably need more time to work through that process. So the state legislature has said, that could have occurred a year ago, and you become aware of the assault family violence allegation involving your police officer? The state legislature says, that's a very serious allegation? We're going to give you the 180 days. It will start from the day of discovery, not from the day of the event. So if it's noncriminal, you have 180 days from the day of the event. If it's criminal, you have 180 days from the day of discovery. Big, big difference. Also want to point out that the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure provides limitations on prosecution for criminal offenses. Article 12. What does that mean? If you commit a misdemeanor crime in the state of Texas, the statute of limitations is two years. You can only be prosecuted two years from the date of the occurrence. If you commit a run-of-the-mill felony, and I don't have enough time to explain what that is, but it's just a normal felony, it's only three years. So any notion that a San Marcos police officer should be subject to an indefinite time period for these types of investigations is above and beyond the pale. The state legislature has even said, even with a serious offense like a felony, it's three years. So why do I say that? I want to synthesize you to the fact that we would have to recognize, we have to have a reasonable time period. It can't be no time period for the imposition of discipline. And that's why Ms. Reyes and her team negotiated successfully with the police association to say, we agree the 180 days is not right. Let's double it. Next slide. So one additional consideration as it relates to there being no time limit. Chief Staff and I talked about this considerably. We talked about the fact that the proposed reform offers no time limit for investigating complaints, which then raises concerns about the availability and validity of evidence if complaints are be given an indefinite time period. For example, video evidence. We obtain video evidence all of the time, probably every day of the week when we investigate criminal offenses. It is normative to contact a private homeowner and/or a business, and we are told, I'm glad you contacted me early because this video rewrites and auto writes over it, typically within 10 days to 30. I don't know of anybody out there, unless they have large servers, that I maintain digital evidence, video, because it's such a big file, longer than 30 days. So to suggest that an investigation should have an indefinite time period regarding a San Marcos police officer is unreasonable if we believe that evidence has any role in determining fact. Next slide. So the negotiated outcome, I've referenced this, staff negotiated to keep the additional 180-day period, which doubles the amount of time specified in civil service. So the contract would state, the chief must file a written complaint within 180 days of the occurrence of the alleged act, and temporarily or indefinitely suspend the officer no later than the 180th day after the date the complaint of the alleged violation is filed by the chief. In other words, that gives me almost a five days short of an entire year. This next sentence is very important. "A review of recent discipline cases shows that these measures ensure misconduct is addressed in a timely manner." We have heard a lot of community concern about misconduct by the San Marcos Police Department, while Department while simultaneously arguing there is no accountability. That's ironic at best. The fact that the community is reporting on these instances where I have either terminated someone's employment or seriously suspended them is indicative of a very high level of accountability. So if you were to walk the halls of the San Marcos Police Department right now, they would tell you that the level of accountability is incredibly high right now. I would then ask, "Well, where's the evidence?" The evidence is all over the public domain. So that's what that's referencing. We don't believe that we need stiffer penalties because we have a higher level of accountability, and we've implemented systems and strategies like the Event Review Board. We've talked about this before. The Event Review Board reviews every pursuit, every crash, every use of force, and we're doing this on a monthly basis so that we can identify and commend good behavior and correct misconduct. Next slide. Issue number two, 48 hours and video review. The demand is that we end delay of interviews for misconduct. Officers are currently afforded over 48 hours to prepare their answers, and they are provided an opportunity to review any videotape, photograph, or other materials in advance of giving an official statement. Okay, so what does the actual agreement say? Article 16, Protected Rights of Officers. I quote, "Not less than 48 hours before the officer who is the subject of an investigation provides a statement to an investigator, the officer shall be provided a copy of the complaint. Before the officer who is the subject of an investigation provides a statement to an investigator, the officer and his representative shall be provided an opportunity to review any videotape, photograph, or other recording of the operative conduct or alleged injuries." Next slide. All right. Why? Where did that come from? Why does the San Marcos Police Department allow their peace officers to review video before providing a statement? Because it's codified in law. The state legislature said in the occupations code, specifically chapter 1701, that peace officers shall have access to their video recordings before providing a statement. It should be noted, this specific law does not come from local government code. Remember chapters 142 and 143. This is a completely different portion of Texas law in the occupations code. Now then, it's been argued by some that it's an unfair advantage that a peace officer can review his or her camera before providing a statement, but a citizen has no such right. Let me submit to you, the citizen actually has a greater right than the peace officer does. Here's why. If a peace officer is involved in a significant event, let's say it's a use of force, let's say it's a shooting, we are going to contact that officer, we're going to allow them the 48 hours pursuant to the agreement, and then we're going to interview the officer, and we are going to take a statement from that officer for the internal investigation. And that officer cannot refuse cooperation. The officer can't even refuse to provide a statement. Now, that may sound like it's actually a violation of the employee's Fifth Amendment right. The Fifth Amendment guarantees our right against self-incrimination. So, if we're going to be fair, if a citizen is involved in a shooting, and we go to said citizen and say, "We need to interview and we need to take a statement," the citizen can say, and they do say, "No, thank you. I'm going to contact my attorney." And we can't take a statement, and we can't interview them. The peace officer has no such authority. In fact, if the police officer with the city of San Marcos refuses to cooperate with the administrative investigation, they can be terminated. So, this slide simply talks about the Fifth Amendment, and I underline the relevant section. "Nor shall be compelled in any criminal case to be a witness against himself." Unless you're a peace officer, that's what's forgotten. So we really need to better understand that. Next slide. In that hypothetical shooting I gave you, the San Marcos Police Department will immediately contact the Texas Rangers. So we just had this Christmas night, 2022. I'm on scene, and one of the very first things I'm asking is, "Have we contacted the Texas Ranger?" We will also summon the Criminal Investigations Division. These are your detectives who work persons crimes and property crimes. We'll also summon what most people call Internal Affairs, but it's correctly called Office of Professional Conduct. We will do three concurrent investigations. They're all going to happen simultaneously. The Texas Rangers, they do their own thing. Criminal Investigations is going to do its own thing. There can be, and there typically is, some conversation between Criminal Investigations and the Texas Rangers. And then Internal Affairs is also at the scene. The Internal Affairs is ultimately going to contact the employee and say, "We're going to schedule a time for you to come in, or we're going to take your statement." Remind you, the employee cannot refuse to provide said statement, but everybody else out there involved in that shooting, if they're a citizen, can absolutely refuse to cooperate. Next slide. So before I finish with this, I really want our citizens to understand, how then is the peace officer protected from being criminally prosecuted from our compelled statement? This is where Garrity, Garrity is a person's last name. Garrity was litigated in the courts. And Garrity basically says that anything that you receive or derive, any work product, from a compelled interview, a compelled statement by an employee for an administrative matter cannot be turned over to the district attorney to prosecute said employee. That's the only Fifth Amendment privilege. But please know, we can still terminate the employee if they refuse to cooperate. So, as it relates to issue number two, 48 hours and the video review, the video review is not in civil service law. It's in a standalone section of 1701 Texas Occupations Code. And it is based on the fact that peace officers do not have the same substantive authority or privilege that a citizen would have, especially when it comes to the administrative matter. Next slide. I put this in here because we typically in-house with the Criminal Justice Reform Committee and the police department, we like to look at best practices, we like to look at data, and we like to look at peer-reviewed articles. So, this is a conclusion from a peer-reviewed article that cited, quote, "The accuracy for officers who reviewed their video increased by 11% while accuracy for officers who did not review their video decreased by 11% from initial to follow-up recall tests. This finding seems to suggest that interviews which rely heavily on free recall may result in more errors as the total content of a report increases, and that those errors might be due in part to limitations in recall for verbal interactions and blending of verbal details across events." I don't know about you, but I want our police officers to have the best recall possible when they are preparing written statements to ultimately be prosecuted in a court of law. I'm not okay with an 11% error rate. So I'm going to lean on what does the Texas law require, and in this case, it's the occupations code. So the negotiated outcome, the 48-hour time period is based on science and best practices. The video reviews are based on current law. Occupations Code 1701.655, Section B6, provisions entitling an officer to access any recording of an incident involving the officer before the officer is required to make a statement about the incident.
Chief, we're behind one slide.
You are? Sorry. Are you caught up now? All right, good. All right, so the last section of that, "Due to the fact that officers are compelled to cooperate with administrative internal investigations, even if it means self-incrimination, it's important these protected rights remain a part of any negotiated agreement." Next slide. All right, issue number three, transparency of files. The demand is, "Public transparency for personnel files. Documented misconduct should be available for supervising officers and the community." Okay, so we now have to go, that's the demand. What does the actual law stipulate? I'm going to go back to Texas Local Government Code, Section 143.089. And I know many in our community, and I know the chief's advisory panel, and definitely know counsel, have heard a lot about the A-file. A is an atom file. The A-file gets us moniker from the little letter A that you see highlighted. I guess we just got lazy over the years, and instead of referencing 143.089A, we just call it the A-file. So what does the A-file contain? "The director or the directors designated shall maintain a personnel file on each firefighter and police officer. The personnel file must contain any letter, memorandum, or document relating to," and this is what you would find in the A-file. "Accommodation, congratulation, honor bestowed on the firefighter or police officer by a member of the public or by the employing department for an action, duty, or activity that relates to the person's official duties." Next slide. "It will also include any misconduct by the firefighter or police officer if the letter, memorandum, or document is from the employing department and the misconduct resulted in disciplinary action." And then lastly, it's going to have the periodic evaluations done on the firefighter or police officer. I underline disciplinary action because it's here that we need to really dissect from a legal perspective, what is discipline for a civil service agency? A discipline in chapter 143 is defined only as an indefinite suspension, a demotion, or a temporary agreed separation. Correction, suspension. Temporary agreed suspension. So an indefinite is akin to a termination, or the employee could be demoted, or the employee could receive a temporary suspension. That by law is discipline. Not a letter of reprimand, not a letter of counseling, not any type of negative connotation that's maintained in the department to coach or correct minor behavior. Discipline is only those three things. Next slide. So, you've also heard a lot about the G-file. The G-file is the opposite of the A-file, and it contains everything that the A-file may or may not have, namely, "A fire or police department may maintain a personnel file on a firefighter or police officer employed by the department for the department's use. Except as provided by subsection H, the department may not release any information contained in the department file to any agency or person requesting information relating to a firefighter or police officer." Next slide. So what does the G-file contain? I've given you some examples. Complaints that do not result in discipline. Neutral Agency 360 entries. So what is Agency 360? Right now, across this nation, police departments keep files. They keep handwritten notes on police officers. Their sergeants, their lieutenants keep handwritten notes. The problem with that archaic system is, until the employee is evaluated, they don't know what's being notated about them. In our world, we call that evaluation by ambush. So, that's not fair to the employee. If we're going to truly coach the San Marcos Police Department officers to be the best, then we have to coach without ceasing. So Agency 360 is an electronic repository. The cool thing about this is, it has a bunch of different categories. It can have a coaching, a coaching negative, a coaching positive. It can have an attaboy or an attagirl. All of these classifications, and I can go in there and I can make an entry on a San Marcos police employee, sworn or civilian, and I can document what I saw related to their behavior. The cool thing about this system is, it immediately notifies the employee what's been said. It gives the employee to provide comment. It also notifies the employee, notifies the employee's chain of command. So what does it do? This is a huge transparency issue internal to the police department so that we can coach and mentor our employees towards the expected conduct. You all have heard me say that we need to inspect what we expect. This is the inspection. So right now, we input a lot of these entries on all of our employees, sworn and civilian. So those are going to be contained in the G-file. It's also going to include, the last thing it says, letters of reprimand. What is a letter of reprimand? Sometimes an employee will do something that's not egregious enough to warrant a suspension. I'll give you a perfect example. The employee is late. The employee is late again, so we coach the employee. The third time the employee is late and it affected staffing, we issue a letter of reprimand. It's a formal letter, and they have to sign it, and it's signed and dated, and they acknowledge this misconduct, and it's then uploaded into the G-file. So that is also considered G-file material. So, the negotiated outcome. Next slide. "Staff negotiated for the inclusion of letters of reprimand and suspensions in performance reviews that will be required as part of all promotional processes while using a disciplinary matrix. Letters of reprimands will now be added to suspensions and fully considered during all promotions for corporal, sergeant, and commander promotional scoring and ranking processes." What in the world does that mean? Remember, a letter of reprimand is G-file. G-file material cannot by law be released by the department. It can't be released to you, it can't be released to them. It is strictly confidential by law. So, remember the demand. The demand was that all employee files be fully open to the public. Well, that would violate state law. However, even the San Marcos Police Officers Association said, "We believe that if an employee gets a bunch of letter of reprimands, they probably shouldn't be our supervisor." So they came to the table with city management and said, "We also agree that this process of holding people accountable should play a greater role in promotions to all ranks we have within the police department minus the chief level." So for the first time in the history of the city of San Marcos, letters of reprimand will now count if this agreement is passed by you and by the association. They will now count on promotional processes. What does that look like? I told you that there is a disciplinary matrix, and eventually this would be made public upon codification of the meet and confer agreement. But let's say that if the employee receives three or four letter of reprimands and they've had a suspension. The association said, "Well, this should count for a considerable amount of negative points." So they're going to start out in the negative, and they're going to have to, through their performance, try to overcome the negative. What is that going to do? It's ultimately going to stymie that employee's ability to promote if they have a disciplinary Next slide. Issue number four, arbitration. The demand, "In third-party arbitration, the Civil Service Commission offers a more democratic and locally accountable alternative to the arbiter system." All right. What does that mean? So we're going to go back to the law, Texas Local Government Code. Remember, we have 142 and chapter 143. 143.057 says, talks about hearing examiners and their authority. So right now, if a San Marcos police officer is suspended, remember, you can have a temporary suspension, you can have an indefinite suspension, and you can have a demotion. If one of those three things happen, then a San Marcos police officer, or really any civil service officer in the state of Texas, has a bifurcated system of appeal. They can go one of two ways. They can go to a hearing examiner, or they can go to the local civil service commission. I'll explain the civil service commission first because it's probably the easiest. The civil service commission is composed of three commissioners- The civil service commission is composed of three commissioners appointed by the city manager and ultimately ratified by city council. They must reside in the city of San Marcos. And those three have the authority pursuant to Chapter 143 to hear appeals. There's a different system, the bifurcated part of that system is a concept of a third-party hearing examiner, what you've heard called arbitration. The hearing examiner may or may not be an attorney. The hearing examiner has the same capability, same due process, same authority as it does the commission. In fact, if the appeal goes to the hearing examiner, then they can act in the stead of the civil service commission. So, next slide. Hearing examiners, I'm going to read this real quick, section F. "In each hearing conducted under this section, the hearing examiner has the same duties and powers as the commission, including the right to issue subpoenas." Next slide. All right. I want to quickly note, Ryan Hartman appealed to a hearing examiner. And I find some irony in this. The demand is that we end arbitration. I'm going to tell the big secret, we won that case. The city prevailed. Ryan Hartman did not prevail in his arbitration. So we had to figure out, wait a minute, this system actually worked like it was supposed to. We presented our evidence, and the hearing examiner agreed with the city. So we looked for, is there any middle ground here in this negotiated outcome? It ultimately came from the San Marcos Police Association, a possible remedy. Hayden, I'm going to jump to... Next slide, please. Slide 23. This was the idea. This is a section of what's called the F-5. The F-5 is a TECOL document. TECOL is our state licensing and regulatory commission. It stands for Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. This is a section of the F-5. The F-5 is a separation document. When a police officer is no longer employed by the city of San Marcos, we're taking their commission away. They're still licensed by TECOL, but they're no longer commissioned by us. We shall, we shall do an F-5. When I do the F-5, I have to contemplate one of three categories to put this in. Did this employee leave honorably? Does this employee necessitate a general discharge? Or does this employee need a dishonorable discharge? So I'm going to look at B. Dishonorable discharge, section B, was terminated by a law enforcement agency or retired or resigned in lieu of termination by the agency for insubordination or untruthfulness. And then section A is criminal misconduct. Those are pretty big substantive, what I call gross misconduct. Criminal, insubordination, untruthfulness. So the proposed solution was, we don't want to lose arbitration. We, the city prevailed in arbitration. It worked for us. The association doesn't want to fully lose arbitration because they believe that it is a due process right. But what if we could agree that for the three big, what I'll call cardinal sins, that's just stands for ideology, what if we could agree on the three cardinal sins that the hearing examiner cannot replace his or her judgment for mine? What does that mean? That means that if the officer appealed, and it was an example of untruthfulness, as an example, we, the city, would still have to prove by a preponderance of evidence, meaning 51%, or likely that it happened, that this officer was untruthful. If we prove the case in chief, if we prove the untruthfulness, the hearing examiner cannot disagree with me and replace his or her judgment for mine. That's a huge win, folks. That's a huge win for insubordination, that's a huge win for untruthfulness, and it's a huge win for criminal conduct. So going back to slide 22, Hayden, so back up one, please. The actual clause says, "Unless there is evidence that the chief's decision was the result of unlawful discrimination, or based on sudden and unaccountable, unaccountable changes of mood or behavior, otherwise known as capriciousness, or based on random choice or personal whim, rather than any reason or system, otherwise arbitrary, the arbitrator may not substitute his or her judgment for the chief's on the disciplinary penalty when the conduct has been found to constitute gross or sustained insubordination that has not been corrected by documented progressive discipline, coaching, counseling, untruthfulness, or allegations of criminal misconduct." To my knowledge, we would be the first city in the state of Texas to have such a provision. I think it's very progressive. I applaud staff, I applaud the association for being willing to negotiate this. I want to go to slide 24, Hayden. Last one. Issue five, end vacation forfeiture. The demand was, "End vacation forfeiture as a substitute to suspension. Stop letting officers preserve seniority and promotion advantages when they are disciplined for misconduct." So the current agreement says, and I quote, "Within five days of the statement of suspension without pay of 120 hours or less, the officer may forfeit vacation or holiday time equal to the length of the suspension to serve the suspension with no break in service for purposes of seniority or promotion. The officer must agree that there is neither right to appeal the suspension nor right of review before any administrative body or judicial body if this method of suspension is chosen, and the officer must sign a waiver of appeal and agree to the suspension. Additionally, section two says, 'Officers who receive a suspension without pay of 24 hours or less may only appeal their suspension to the Civil Service Commission.'" Next slide. All right. So what are the pros? I want to point out the pros and the cons. The pros to ending vacation forfeiture considers significant staffing shortages and supports consistent discipline. Let me explain this versus trying to read all of this. This is the easiest way to do it. I'm going to suspend an employee for 40 hours. Right now, that employee can say, "Chief, I know I messed up. I want to forfeit my vacation accruals, and I will waive my right to appeal." That's very attractive to me for two reasons, really three. Number one, if the officer appeals, which Ryan Hartman did, we are looking at litigation costs of about $50,000. Number two, if the employee goes that route, I have to take him or her off the streets for 40 hours. Guess what I have to do? I have to fill his or her void. So now I've incurred the loss of that employee plus 40 hours of overtime. Right now, we have overtime that is going unstaffed. Because there's such a huge need, and I've already told this body, that we are running an 18% variance on authorized staffing because we're so short-staffed. So to take another officer off the streets is a huge shortcoming for me. Because now I have to try to find somebody to fill it in overtime, and I've already shown that's problematic. Third point, this is the point that's often most missed. When the officer forfeits, I'm going to say it to him, his vacation accruals equal to 40 hours, they still lose 40 hours of pay. The net impact on their financial situation is the exact same as if they had served 40 days without, correction, 40 hours without working. So they can either not work and we fill overtime, or they can work, we don't have to fill the overtime, and we're going to go pull it out of their accruals. Either way, the net financial impact on the police officer is exactly the same. Arguably, and Chief Stat pointed this out, if the officer elected to say, "Hey, wait a minute, I want to go ahead and take the hard suspension now. I'm going to force you to find overtime to fill that." If they took that and they kept their vacation accruals, those accruals at the time they retire, let's say they retire in 10 years, they're worth more money in 10 years than they are today. So arguably, the police officer who says, "I want to forfeit my vacation today," is making a decision that's financially more detrimental to them because that money could have grown actuarially until they retire. Next slide. So this is a huge win. "Staff negotiated for the inclusion of all misconduct to be weighted and included in promotion for the ranks of corporal, sergeant, and commander." Remember what I said. We are now going to, for the first time in the history of the city of San Marcos, include some G-file, those letter of reprimands, in all considerations for promotion for corporal, sergeant, and commander. So we believe that that's a better negotiated outcome than trying to cut off our nose to spite our face to force them to take the loss right then. Next slide.
And I think the other thing that was getting lost, because we were hearing people thinking that because they took vacation, it didn't count as a suspension, it still counts as a suspension on their record. So just want to make sure that that's clear, that it's not like the suspension goes away, they're just able to use their vacation time to serve that suspension.
And I am so glad you said that because you just taught memory. I can't tell you how many social media comments I have read where, "Oh, look, such-and-such employee was able to forfeit his vacation accruals instead of being suspended." And the interesting thing is, the document that basically codifies the suspension says, "Notice and order of agreed temporary suspension." It's right there in the title. And then you read the actual verbiage, and what does it say? "You are hereby suspended, but you are forfeiting your right to appeal. You're going to forfeit that amount of accruals." And oh, by the way, we're going to attach a last chance agreement. "If you do this again of equal or severe, more severe behavior, we're going to dismiss you without prejudice and you can't appeal." All of that's in the document. But everybody wants to say, "Oh, well, look, they just forfeited vacation, they weren't even suspended." I think it's kind of lost on them in plain sight. So thank you for reminding me that. Last thing I want to say before Ms. Reyes wraps this up. I was sensitized to these numbers just last week, so I apologize for not sharing this ahead of time. In the last 10 years, we have had 42 retirements. That is a staggering number. The national average, the tenure for police officers across the nation when they elect to retire is 26.4 years. Right now, the last couple of years for the city of San Marcos is 22.7. Think about that delta and how many years we're missing out with those 40-plus employees. 26.4 is the national average. Folks, we're down to 22.7. We have cops bailing out much faster at a higher rate in the city of San Marcos. I don't know about you, but I'm concerned, which is why I want to submit to you to reinforce what Ms. Reyes said, this is a good agreement. I look forward to this being ratified on May 16th so that we can get back to work, we can hire more police officers to get up to our authorized sworn strength, and we can start to whittle down this incredible violent crime. With that, do you have any questions?
Did you have some else? Ms. Reyes, you're asking questions about that portion of the presentation. We only have a couple more slides just to wrap it up.
Oh, okay. But thank you for that detail. We have seen, we have gone through this, and we have, it's been explained to us several times at least how things come about. This is our, seeing what the final negotiation is. So thank you for that, and please continue. I don't see anybody asking questions. Ms. Garza.
Chief, you've explained this to us before, but I think just for the public, I think when it comes to the specifically vacation forfeiture, I think where folks get confused is when they focus in on like the big cases that are in the media. So for Ryan Hartman, for example, when it comes to administrative leave, you know, vacation forfeiture, can you like walk us through what happened in that scenario and how that aligns with this?
Okay, you want me to go all the way back to 2020 on Ryan? Okay, no. Okay. When, let's not get administrative leave confused with suspensions. I appreciate your asking that clarification. If an employee is accused of serious misconduct, then I and the civil service director, Linda Spacek, have an important decision to make. Does the employee need to continue to provide police services while we investigate this allegation? If Linda and I, and I typically always visit with Chase, it's typically the three of us, if we look at this and we say objectively, we're not comfortable with the officer having our gun and our badge and still providing services while we investigate this, we place them on administrative leave. And they can be on administrative leave until the resolution of the investigation. That's completely separate from the things that we've contemplated today. As it relates to the vacation accruals, I think I answered those questions. What specific question are you looking for on Ryan?
Well, I guess, so folks, I think that a lot of our community's perception is that Ryan Hartman was paid to be at home, right? And so you explaining the difference between administrative leave versus vacation forfeiture, I think, kind of demystifies that, like in terms of, it wasn't because he had this option to forfeit vacation, it's because he was on administrative leave, which means they're getting paid, but it's because you guys don't feel comfortable having him working, right?
Right. And the last thing I'll say on that is, I just want to reinforce this notion. The police department owns the fact that what was done regarding the early stages of the Ryan Hartman investigation are not consistent with how we will operate moving forward. All of you need to be assured of that. We have it right moving forward. I'm a visionary, I'm not going to police looking through the rearview mirror. I want to look through the windshield because that's where all the problems facing San Marcos lie.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I think it helps people get a better understanding of what has happened, what's going to happen, and also helps our community push for more accountability, knowing the different definitions of all of that. So thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Ms. Reyes. Next slide, Hayden.
So as the chief mentioned, the reform issues that were negotiated that will be considered by the council and ratification by the San Marcos Police Officers Association is to limit the role of the arbitrator, include in performance review process for promotions letters of reprimand. We also asked the association midway if we could go ahead and livestream the meetings, and they were agreeable to that. So that will be our practice moving forward, and we'll modify the ground rules for that. We also updated the term of the agreement from June 8th, 2023, to September 30th of 2026. We also changed the 180-day rule modification, that that was something we had negotiated in the prior agreement, that will be repealed effective June 7th. And we renegotiated pay parameters. Next slide. Next slide, Hayden. There we go. So the current three-year agreement is from October 1st, 2022, and it was scheduled to go through September 30th of 2025. The proposed three-year agreement will start on June 8th, 2023, and will go through September 30th of 2026. So it's basically making the year one of the three-year agreement a longer year. And again, this is all subject to ratification by the Police Officers Association and approval by the council on May 16th. Next slide. The negotiated pay parameters, I will say that, you know, there was some conversation at the beginning about what the base pay increases that were going to take effect in order for us to negotiate these parameters. And I'm happy to say that the Officers Association did meet us in a good place in meeting the constraints that we put on in regard to what we were willing to pay. So the base pay increases are 5% in each year of the agreement effective June 8th. They also asked for certification pay amounts to escalate a little bit, you know, a little bit more in the current agreement than we had negotiated with the prior. So the prior agreement for year one, the intermediate certificate was $50, advance was 100, and then the masters was 150. And so now in the current agreement for the year one, it's going to be $55 for the intermediate, 100 for the advanced, and $155 for the master. And what's important about that is just that we're continuing to see our officers go through continuous professional development and training regarding contemporary issues that are being faced. As society evolves and the issues that they face evolve, then it's important to make sure that they continue to stay up to date with that training, and we're incentivizing that as such with this certification. And we're incentivizing that as such with this certification pay. Next slide. So the next steps is that the Officers Association will be ratifying and looking at the proposed agreement. I know that the Officers Association is educating their membership as well in regard to the discussions that have been had, and I'm sure that they were also watching this evening. The council will then be asked to consider the meet and confer agreement with the Officers Association during your May 16th meeting. That's the next meeting. And then upon approval, the new agreement will take effect, as I mentioned, on June the 8th. That is the conclusion of the presentation. Are there any questions that you have?
Any questions, counsel? Mr. Prather?
Well, that was a really, that was a great presentation, and thank you, staff and chief, for all the negotiations. This last decade, violent crime in our community has tripled, and policing is very dangerous work. The chief mentioned it, but we have about a 5% casualty rate in that department. I come to that number, there's about 100 officers, give or take. Two were shot and killed, one shot and wounded, two severely wounded off I-35. And it's dangerous and difficult work, and we ask a lot of them. This meet and confer agreement, it will make our community safer. It is measured progress in criminal justice reform, and it will make a better policing force. I'm really happy with what I'm seeing tonight.
Anyone else?
Yeah, it was a great presentation and really covered all the stuff that we've been hearing from the community about changes in the police department. And I think that we're really blessed to have Stan come here, actually. He's an amazing guy, amazing visionary, really puts a lot of thought, really works with all his crew and people, and he's really changed that department into something you can respect and trust. So I'm happy about it.
First off, I'd like to thank staff. I know this isn't easy. This took a lot of time. To the chief for putting in the effort and leadership for this, to the Officers Association for sitting at the table and having an honest, open discussion about transparency, about discipline, pay. I know this isn't easy, and I'm hoping that we can get this ratified and move on and get some additional officers on the street, bring down violent crime. And I think this is a good agreement for everyone, for the city, for the officers, and for the so-called criminal justice movement. There's a lot of things in here that no other city in the state of Texas is doing. And I think that's something that we should all be proud of, and it's not an easy thing to do. So I just want to thank everybody, for the community for taking part, and staff, and for the union for sitting down and negotiating a good contract.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you. I also want to thank the staff and the police union for meeting this halfway on this issue. I was hoping it goes this route. I think it came out to be a win-win for both sides. My son's a cop, and I see what he goes through. It's a tough, tough job. And what they get paid, it's, I keep telling my son, find another job, son. You don't need to do this. But he likes it. But I'm glad where we're at now. I think that's a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Ms. Garza?
You can go first.
I just want to say thank you to not just the staff, but the association, the chief, but to those who brought the Hartman Accords to us requesting reform. I do think this is a great movement. I want to say thank you to the chief for mentioning that it's good to look in the windshield instead of looking through the rearview mirror. I think that's a great step for us to take. Just thank you for everybody's involvement, and I hope that we have faith in the new agreement, and I hope we can take the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. So I think it's important to note that multiple truths can exist at once, right? So it's true that staff and the association, along with chief, devoted a lot of time to this contract. Improvements have been made. However, it's also true that actions to increase transparency and critical dialogue with our neighbors seem to have only happened after a lot of work by our neighbors. I think there's a lot to be desired when it comes to doing things that will ensure that we're working alongside like a large and diverse group of our neighbors. I think, for example, this presentation that chief has made, and to the mayor's point, he's given it to us in like Criminal Justice Reform Committee and in other spaces, it would have been more powerful in like a town hall dialogue format. I think having conversations will help prevent us to getting to points like this. But I do appreciate everybody's willingness to do things like make the video recordings and live streams of the meet and confer negotiations available. I think that's going to help with our community's collective understanding of this moving forward, so that we ensure everybody feels that they have a space to give their perspective.
And I'll say thank you to all involved. Mr. Prather, you made some very good points earlier. It's not easy to be a police officer, and granted, very few want to do it. And so I am, I'm happy that our wishes were carried to the meet and confer discussions, and I thank you, Ms. Reyes, Mr. Staff, Chief Standridge, everyone involved, the POA, for coming up with an agreement that all can live with, or at least the two sides can live with. So I thank you very much, and we will see this on our May 16th agenda for a vote. Did you have anything else, Ms. Reyes?
No, thank you. And I do want to thank the team, and I do want to thank the Police Officers Association as well. And, you know, I just want to be clear that Chief Standridge was not a member of the negotiating team. He was a resource, because it's a very difficult position for a chief to be in, you know, trying to make sure that he shows his loyalty to his officers, but also to his bosses. And so trying to make sure that he was there as a point of reference, he did attend just about every meeting, and we used him as a resource with that. And I did ask him to give this presentation because it's good to inform the community about it. But I do want to just make that clarification, that the negotiating team did not include him, but he was a resource that attended our meetings and helped with questions.
All right. And that wraps up this item, and we will take a break. Counsel, if you would be back by 8:10, by that clock back there, or the one that we've got in the break room. I have returned, we have returned to our regular meeting, and we have finished with item one. But there's only 19, and a bunch of them are on consent, so. So we are to our consent agenda, which means the following ordinances, resolutions, and other items, number two through nine, which is about half the agenda. May be acted upon by one motion. Counsel, do we have any items to pull?
Motion to approve.
Hold on, hold on, one second. Staff is asking to pull six. And now, Mr. Prather.
Yeah, motion to approve items two through nine, with the exception of item six.
Okay. I'm looking for the second. Seconded by Mr. Scott. Thank you, Ms. Trevino.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Weren't there three more on consent?
We pulled six.
10, 11, and 12, weren't they? Oh, it was pre-stated, I'm sorry.
Those are public hearings.
Thank you.
That's why Ms. Hernandez is over here. She's waiting for those.
All right, Ms. [inaudible].
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. And as our custom, we will come back to the pulled items after the public hearings. And so we are on item 10.
Okay, receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-37 approving TMP-23-01, amending the city's transportation master plan appendix E, roadway appendix G bicycle plan, and appendix H greenways plan to remove the extension of McCoy Drive from McCoy Circle to Davis Lane to remove a future avenue from River Road across a subject property to Davis Lane, and to remove a portion of the proposed greenway adjacent to the applicant's property, and including procedural provisions and providing effective date and consider approval of ordinance 2023-37 on the first of two readings.
Ms. Hernandez?
Good evening, mayor and council. Madam Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. Before I get started, I wanted to note that there was a typo in the packet. Thank you very much, Mayor Houston, for pointing out that in the packet, it said this was a public hearing with no action. We are, in fact, on our second public hearing for this item, and we would like to have action from y'all this evening. You've heard this presentation at two prior meetings, so I am planning to be brief, but we have all of the slides in the packet and on the screen if we need to go back to them. McCoy's is proposing to construct a special event facility and received approval for a conditional use permit for that use from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The request before city council this evening is removal of two transportation master plan thoroughfare plan roads, as well as a portion of a proposed greenway. You can see that one road segment is proposed across the railroad tracks, as well as across the current Walmart property, making this a very difficult alignment to achieve. Hayden, if you can skip ahead two slides, please, to the purple map. The roads are in a high-intensity area on the preferred scenario map, where we know that connectivity is very important. However, if we go to the next slide, we can see that one of the segments is completely within the floodplain. Next slide. Staff identified the two segments separately and provided information on the cross-sections. Segment one is shown connecting River Road to Davis Lane. Next slide. Segment two connects segment one to Interstate 35 through the existing McCoy Circle cul-de-sac. Next slide. And the request includes the removal of a portion of a greenway along the railroad tracks and this applicant's property. Staff will propose a new alignment of this greenway when the transportation master plan is updated. Next slide. We wanted to provide a wider context to show that segment one is shown as a parallel street to I-35, which would ultimately connect to Yulin Road. Next slide. As far as process, like I mentioned, we are on our second public hearing. This is the first reading of the ordinance. Next slide. Staff recommends approval of the request to remove the two road segments and the portion of the greenway adjacent to the applicant's property from the transportation master plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of staff's recommendation. That concludes my presentation.
All right. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak far against or about this item? If you would, approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
I'm Megan McCoy Jones. My address, 1350 IH 35 North. Y'all have been so kind to let me give a larger presentation about this project. Of course, the request before you tonight, which we're asking for your support on, is allowing us then to build out our corporate campus, ultimately to build a retreat and training center. A couple of great things happen when we get to do that. We get to develop that property in a way that it's never been developed before, with a lot of care about what's going on in the natural environment. One of the things I'm most excited about is our team members from across our geography, which is primarily Texas and a little beyond it, will all come to our hometown, they'll see our headquarters and be more connected with our team here. Their hotel nights will be here instead of in Cedar Park, which we're really thankful for, and they'll get to be a part of, you know, what we consider our home, and that's meaningful to us and important to us. So we obviously have plenty of time to answer questions that you have. I think we've answered most of them. I think we have some other folks online who are available for questions if you have them, including our engineer. And I want to especially thank staff for all of their support as we've moved through this process. So thank you so much.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Baker?
Hi, yes. Maxwell Baker. Yes, 314 Shady Lane. I had asked the question kind of previously regarding this development and have concerns about how or if it is going to be, not on the camera, unless I duck a little bit, how or if it will be in competition with the Embassy Suites. You know, the point was made by Ms. McCoy that, you know, what a great win this would be for the city. I'm struggling to say on camera. What a great win this would be for the city, but those efforts could have been done already. They could have been having those events at the Embassy Suites and helping the city pay that off. So has anybody on council asked whether their goal is to compete in that space, or if it would be specifically to bolster and use it for just their own private McCoy's events? And again, my concern is rooted in the fact that McCoy's is a rather significant part of the greater San Marcos partnership. They tend to do a lot of their meetings out of the Embassy Suites, and just want to make sure that we're not losing out on that money for our taxpayers and for paying off that building that is still being paid off. So I would appreciate if someone on council could carry that question forward and get it answered. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in chambers wishing to speak far against or about this item? Not Ms. Trevino. Do we have folks online?
Did she say my name? I can't hear anything.
No, she called someone else, but we're getting to you. So Ms. Trevino, I show that Diane McGregor wished to speak on this item?
It's not on this issue.
Okay. Hold that thought. Okay. And then, no one else in chambers? Now we are to you, Ms. Capaletta.
Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capaletta. I live at 1322 Belvin. Did the first speaker give her address? I wish the staff would make that adjustment to the camera so the speakers can be in the shot. And I would also ask you to please make sure that those are on Zoom or in the split screen in the final rendition. I think it's important. I fought five years for the split screen shot so the audience members at home can see both the speaker, and Mr. Walker, you can shut your camera off, please. You're supposed to have your camera off. Someone direct him to shut his camera off. Thank you. There should be a split screen situation when the speaker on Zoom and the reaction of the DA, so I think that's important for transparency's sake. It's in the master plan. That's what they continually told me when they came to butcher Heritage Live Oaks in a block that's older than this community. It's in, and even the mayor, it's, remember, oh, it's in the master plan, got to have that sidewalk. And I'm looking here at this documentation from the McCoy family, and they want to amend the transportation master plan. No offer to pay for the city staff time, or in terms of what they did on the front end of the work, right? And now the back end of the work, and now this whole process. And then all the citizens who worked so hard for this, but we're going to make this change for this family, that maybe it's a political decision on y'all's part, because you're politicians, and you got to got those votes, right? But I find it really interesting that you don't bend so easily for private citizens when they have really simple things like a rinky-dink block with a sidewalk, which literally butchered Heritage Live Oaks, and it's ruined thousands of years of, what, limestone historic wall? And you would not even bend on that. It's in the master plan, Ms. Capaletta, is what they kept saying. But you're going to make a major change for this family when it's in your master plan. This is not a rinky-dink street. And I just wish you guys treated the residents of Martindale, maybe if they were rich, like the McCoy family, you would roll over and rubber stamp whatever their desires are. And their desires are only just to be left alone. They're not asking you to invest time or to throw, because if I go to McCoy's and I want to return, I have to bring that product back. I don't just get my money back on my credit card. The citizens have paid for this, and there have been speakers and letters opposed to this. But y'all are politicians, and it's always funny. You look great on the top with the suit, but your walk-around jeans on the back end. I can feel it. The bell is about to ring, and another angel is about to get its wings. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
And I believe there are no more speakers, so I will close.
Motion to approve.
The public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Counsel, any questions, concerns? You'll recall that I did ask, I believe, at the very first time we discussed this, are we sure we're good with removing roads? And I understand why, we had a road that said we need to get from here to here, but I don't believe that that road is feasible. Honestly, I'm not sure why it lasted on the master plan, but I get it. And plus, once you look at the floodplain map, you kind of go, yeah, we don't really want to do that. So anybody else? Mr. Mendoza?
I actually have a question for the applicant, if you don't mind, and it's just really, there was somebody who came after you that had a good question.
Yeah.
And I was hoping you could address that. See, this is going to be your center, we're going to focus all your manager training and things like that, your pavilion. Do you have all intentions on keeping it there and not, I mean, are you trying to compete with Embassy Suites, or do you just want to focus on keeping your events at McCoy's and not try to take away any of the customers we have from around the city?
Yeah, we're building this for our company's private use, so we're not planning on renting it or charging money for people to use it. As most of you know, our corporate office has served as a place where meetings have been held. been held for different community groups. We never charge for that. We never have. It's not our intent. You know, we've been a citizen of the community for 50 years, headquartered here, and want to keep being a great community citizen. The rates at Embassy Suites for us and our team didn't make sense, along with our training partner who's based in Cedar Park. We're asking them to relocate their training to provide it here to accommodate this whole corporate campus. So that's nothing about Embassy Suites. It's really just a comment about, we want our team to be all together on our headquarters' campus. The point of the retreat center, which may sound bizarre, because we're going to spend a lot of time and money and effort to make it great. It really is to just host our own team in a great environment. That's the point.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anything else, counsel?
I have a few questions.
Yes, of course. You're welcome.
Anybody else? Anything? Mr. Vigno, let's vote.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 11, Mr. Vigno.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-38, amending the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-23-03, I'm so sorry, by rezoning approximately 67.121 acres of land out of Edward Burleson Survey Number 18, Abstract Number 63 in Hayes County, Texas, located at and near 3830 South IH 35 Center Point and IH 35 from FD Future Development and LI Light Industrial to CD-5 Character District 5, or subject to consent of the owner and other less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and providing effective date, and consider per the ordinance 2023-38 on the first of two readings.
Ms. Hernandez.
Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This zoning change request is for an approximately 67-acre parcel that is near the intersection of and has frontage on both Center Point and Interstate 35. The property is within city limits. Next slide. The property is currently vacant. It's surrounded by vacant land, restaurants, and a gas station. Next slide. The property is currently zoned future development and light industrial, and the light industrial property was the prior location of the Ingram Ready mix. The applicant is requesting character district five zoning for the entire property. Next slide. The property is mostly in an employment center on the preferred scenario map, and some of the property is identified as open space where there's existing floodplain. Next slide. The development code indicates character districts are not preferred in an employment center, and each request should be considered individually with additional analysis. Next slide. Character district five allows a variety of uses, including high-density residential. The applicant is proposing some multifamily and some commercial for the site. Next slide. There's floodplain on the property, and it's located in the Cottonwood Creek watershed. A detailed environmental analysis will be reviewed by staff as the property goes through the development process, but they did provide a preliminary site plan that shows where they are using that floodplain area as their detention facilities. Next slide. Infrastructure improvements will also be required through the development process. The city of San Marcos is a sole utility service provider. Next slide. Flooding and floodplain were the main discussion topics at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and like I mentioned, the applicant provided that preliminary site layout, which is in the packet, as well as in the presentation if we need to review it. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this request. That concludes my presentation.
All right. I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in chambers if you wish to speak far against or about this item. If you'll give your name and your address, please.
Good evening. Crystal Harris, 1701 Directors Boulevard, Austin, Texas. So we're here this evening to talk about the zoning, as Ms. Hernandez already reviewed. We started our discussions with staff about a year ago on this project, and we feel like it brings an opportunity for a multi-generational residential development, along with some retail and commercial opportunities along the frontage, as was mentioned. So we feel like this is a very good transitional piece from the two major furnages that we have and provides some additional residential housing in this area. And we're just really excited and open to answering any questions that y'all may have. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Hello. Yeah, Brian Freel with Empire Group, the developer. Address 6617 North Scottsdale Road, Scottsdale, Arizona. Empire Group, just to tell you a little bit about the developer, we're a 40-plus-year developer, and we've developed pretty much every asset class over that lifespan. And currently, we're focusing on a couple of main things. One is some mixed-use infill products around the Phoenix market, and then the single-family cottage rental communities, which is the component of the multifamily or the residential part of this site. As mentioned, it's going to be a mixed-use development. We're going to have several commercial parcels on Center Point, commercial parcel on 35, and then a component will be residential, which is these, what we call is the village community. Village, we've developed, completed five of these in the Phoenix market, have six others under construction, and 20 plus or minus under various stages of entitlements in Arizona and outside Arizona, including obviously Texas. We have two that we're actually going to break ground in the next 60 days, one in Hutto, Texas, and one in Fort Worth. So the community is, it's a hybrid concept. It's a hybrid between a single-family development and a multifamily development, all kind of part of a highly amenitized community. These amenities are more what you'd see in a multifamily development, you know, clubhouse, fitness center, pools, spas, dog parks. We have, you know, barbecue grills, fire pits, different walking trails that are part of these communities. But these are also, we maintain management. We have onsite leasing and management offices, so we are basically in control of all aspects of landscape maintenance, public-private, building maintenance, public and private. But these are, you know, so they're built like single-family homes. They live that way, but they have all the amenities of a multifamily. Many people, you know, these are higher premium rent products, so this is more of a lifestyle choice. People will choose to live in these. Our residents are a combination of, as Crystal mentioned, we're a multi-generational type product. We have a lot of single professionals, young couples. Then on the other end of the spectrum, we'll have empty nesters, seniors, pre-señors. So we feel this is a product that can serve a wide variety and a wide collection of ages. Also, it, we have a pretty mature renter base. Our renters are about 35 years of age, average, you know, reasonably higher income because of the premium product, you know, over $85,000 is our annual household income, and we have a pretty stable renter base. These, our leases are 28 months is current average, so more than two years. So that's just a little bit about our renters. Happy to talk more about the product, but just a little bit about the residential component of the project.
All right. Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak far against or about this one? Ms. McGregor, did you? If you wish to speak, you'll need to come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you may speak on this item 11.
So Joanne, 115 Turkey Hollow Circle. So just hearing the speaker speak, he talked about it being, if I understood him correctly, fairly high-end housing, and I just want to express my concern that part of what we need in San Marcos is housing for moderate and low-income people. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in chambers? Ms. Capaletta, it is now your turn. You're on mute.
Yes, I know, Jane. Thanks. I, it's just a common, you know, mistake that ordinary people make. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capaletta. I live at 1322 Belvin. I'll say, people can't afford the property taxes primarily because city staff can't, they give themselves raises, and I guess you guys are getting raises, and they just can't, you guys can't be fiscally conservative. They can't put a lock on the budget, which is leading people to lose their homes. So the previous speaker nailed it. I can just see this scenario now with some of you. Daddy, why does the town flood? Well, because daddy continually voted for multifamily developments and floodplains. It's, I would love for you guys to ask this developer, what is the non-residential portion of this? She said in her presentation, it's not preferred. So I'm just wondering, like, what is the use for people to get involved in the comprehensive master plan if we just tinker with things for the McCoys? Or what is the use of getting involved in the land development code process if we're just going to make these changes for guys in Brooks Brothers suits? It's multifamily, it floods. And some of you campaigned under the ethos, and more importantly, the pathos, that you were a flood victim. And it's, once again, is your legacy going to be to tell your daughter or your son, well, daddy just, he was a politician, and he just, he had no problem continually voting for developments? And I understand daddy's legacy, darling, is that he voted for flooding time and again. And he voted for upscale, for businesses under the auspice of a mixed-use-in-vogue kind of community, when we don't even know what it is. Is it going to be armpit? The best part is the rich people over at the kissing tree are going to be near it. Now, they're a gated community. The most important part is the Hunter Road floods. And every time you guys continue to develop over floodplain in areas that are impacted on floodplain, the next big one that hits, one person dies, one person loses all of their belongings, their entire life, that's on your soul. You can continue to rubber stamp it, whether it's Martindale, or it's over there by the rich boys at the kissing tree. But the bottom line is, the more that you destroy this town, developing in the floodzone in other areas that are not a floodzone, brick by brick, well, soil by soil, you are now creating a ticking-time ecological boom of flooding in this community. And that is going to be your legacy for you to tell your children and your geron children, well, daddy didn't think it through too well. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
I will close the public hearing. I'm thinking a motion on this item.
Motion. Second.
I'll give Mr. Prather the motion, Mr. Gleason the second. Questions, concerns, counsel? If you're still thinking of, I can, okay, go ahead.
I was just saying, I'm just glad we're seeing some residential mixed-use development there on I-35 and along the outlet malls. You know, it's one of the busiest highways in North America, and it's a great place to showcase our town, and a, you know, place for people to, if they want to work and commute right down the highway. So I'm glad we're finding, sort of, see some residential, especially the mixed-use style in that area.
I have a question, and it has to do with the floodplain. Which way does the water flow here? Because I see, it's like it ends at the southwest corner.
Not engineer, but I would think that it flows, when you're looking at the map, from left to right, so towards Cottonwood Creek.
That's what I was assuming, but just wanted to make sure. It just seems like there's a lot, yeah, thank you for pulling up that map. Looks like there's a lot from almost where it starts. I see a little bit there to the left, and then is that just a low spot?
That I wouldn't know without.
Falls there?
Having the engineering drawings. But Hayden, if you wouldn't mind, you can jump to the site plan that's in the presentation, right after the recommendation. You can see that at the bottom of the screen there is quite a large detention pond, where there, again, this is just a preliminary plan, so we haven't done the full review, but we can see that they are already looking at how to route drainage around the property and have that as the detention pond.
It's pretty much the start of one of the extensions of the creek.
Yeah. It's got to come from somewhere. I guess it's from the areas that aren't low enough to be considered flood, and there's a huge watershed.
It really just starts on the slope of Center Point, where it starts to come downhill and then goes up and over.
All right. Any other questions, counsel? Mr. Vigno, let's vote on this one.
Okay, I'm here.
Wait a minute. Oh.
Thank you.
Did you wave or something? I didn't, I didn't see it.
I was trying to hit my.
I need some kind of signal, if you would. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm just kind of curious, on the, since we're going to reroute the water a different direction, what kind of impact is that going to have downstream? Have y'all calculated of how much water we're looking at that's going to be going to those creeks?
There will be a watershed protection plan as part of the development process that they do as they're going through the plating process, and we have a flood prevention ordinance that does not allow them to change or make an impact on any downstream properties, and that gets reviewed at that time by our engineering staff.
And that's pretty effective every time we do that?
I'm not an engineer. I won't hesitate to answer that question.
Well, I know your experience. I'm just kind of curious, what you've seen in your lifetime of being a planner?
So again, I'm not an engineer, and those are engineering regulations, and that particular ordinance that I was referencing went into effect in 2016. So anything post-2016 would have had to do a watershed protection plan, and again, they do the very detailed engineering calculations that I wouldn't hesitate to look at, to look at the current flows and the after-development flows. And they have to prove no impact.
Appreciate it.
They're not rerouting. They're just, that's going to be their open space.
Well, I guess someone used that word, and I just copied it. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Y'all ready to vote? What about Mr. Vigno?
Okay, I'm going to start with Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Sure.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes six to one.
On to item 12, Mr. Vigno.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2022-78 on the second of two readings, amend the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-22-33, by rezoning approximately 120 acres of land, generally located near the 4100 block of State Highway 21, approximately 1,400 feet north of Harris Hill Road, from P Public and Institutional District to LI Light Industrial District, or subject to the consent of the owner and other less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and providing effective date, subject to restrictive covenants on waste-related uses.
Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. City Council held a public hearing for this rezoning request in September of 2022, and the applicant requested postponement until today. So we are here doing the second reading for this zoning, and because we have exceeded the 90 days from the public hearing that we held for first reading, we're holding a public hearing as required by the city's charter. The subject property is approximately 169 acres and has frontage on Highway 21, as well as future FM 110. Next slide. The property is currently vacant and is surrounded by vacant land and rural residential in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, as well as the San Marcos Regional Airport. Counsel may recall this property's unique shape, which excludes a runway protection zone easement that is at the end of the runway that you can see there on the other side of Highway 21. Next slide. The property is in the city limits, and it's zoned public, P, and the applicant is requesting light industrial zoning. Next slide. The property is in a low-intensity zone on the preferred scenario map. Next slide. And the development code indicates that special districts are not preferred in a low-intensity area, and each request should be considered on an individual basis with the additional analysis. Next slide. Light industrial would allow a variety of uses, including those bad neighbor uses that we talk about quite often with these zoning districts, but included in the packet and the applicant agreed to are restrictive covenants, which would limit those bad neighbor uses. Next slide. The property is not in an environmentally sensitive area. Next slide. Infrastructure improvements will be required through the development process. City of San Marcos is the water and sewer provider, and Peternalis is the electric provider. Next slide. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, and as I mentioned, in September of last year, City Council voted to approve this request on first reading, and that concludes my presentation.
I think we voted six to two. Okay. I will now open the public hearing, and we have 12. We have Scott, I'm going to say this wrong, probably Gogan, Sarah Chong, on, online. Are they with us?
Yes.
All right. Their three minutes will start when they give their name and address.
He's on Zoom.[1780.22] He's on Zoom, I don't-
Are they accepting their invitation?
There it goes.
There we go.
Sorry. Scott Gaughan, Acres Advisory Group, on behalf of the, on the developer, 201 Liberty, West Liberty Road, Reno, Nevada, suite 301, 89501, here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, well, we're in the public hearing portion, so if you'll turn off your video, but don't go away, we might have a question for you here shortly, thank you.
Thank you.
And is Sarah?
Yes, I'm trying to move her over, but she hasn't accepted the prompt.
All right, well, in the meantime-
Oh, there she goes, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Sarah?
Sarah, if you'll get your, your unmute and turn on your video, there we go, that looks better.
Hi, everybody, I also am the development company Acres Advisory Group, Sarah Chong, at 1626 Park Haven Drive here in Houston, Texas. And we're here to answer any questions that you guys may have.
All righty. Well, I will continue on with the presentation, and it's good to know that you're there for questions. Ms. McGregor, did she ask, okay. Is there anyone else in chambers wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Baker?
My understanding, sorry, Maxwell Baker, 3014 Shady Lane, my understanding this is an item related to the taxiway? I, I was kinda writing some notes and stuff, I sorta missed that.
I, I'm gonna ask a question similar to that, so if you'll just hang loose, I think we'll get your answer.
Okay, well, to, to maybe presuppose what's gonna be asked and clarified. You know, I had mentioned, in the context of the airport master plan and the expansion of that airport, and if I remember correctly, this is related to traffic that's gonna be flying over this area as incoming, receiving for the airport, loosely remembering all of this. And I had asked, in the Sustainability Committee, which was at the time chaired by myself and included the mayor, and then eventually included Councilmember Scott, I had asked that real studies be conducted about the air quality of our region before we move forward carte blanche with a multimillion-dollar airport expansion that could very well have potential health risks associated by increased flight traffic. Mayor and Councilmember Scott did not share that concern, otherwise we would've had an agenda item come before us, because I asked incessantly that that happened, and I needed a second, and I figured because I had already asked a plurality of council members, I couldn't ask other people at the dais. That being said, I put in front of them studies that show the air quality in San Antonio and Austin, because, if I remember correctly, and not to put words in their mouth, but a statement to the effect of, if the air quality was so bad in Austin and San Antonio, we would hear about it. And I did hear about it in news articles that I presented to them, as well as staff. Those were dismissed as kind of suggesting that it's really tough to pin down things like air quality, which is true, right? I read through the scientific literature as well, I understand it's tough to measure parts per million and directly point to a user, but we know from substantial amounts of evidence that airport expansions near low-income communities create health problems. That's all over the place in academia. And, you know, my, my question was, could there be some sort of Purple Air Monitor, as the mayor found out through our, our, uh, Alliance on Regional Water Authority, I think is the acronym?
Uh, no, it was, it's CAPCOG, Capital Area-
CAPCOG, sorry.
Council of Governments Clean Air.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, so some sources were identified that could potentially help us test some of that, there was logistics and expenses to it, and my very basic question was, can we put this to staff to see what the cost is to prove or deny that this should be a concern we have with the airport expansion? I was denied that request, and subsequently, as I mentioned, didn't seek out other council members, because I felt like the Sustainability Committee had kind of spoken, and that this was not going to move forward. I ask that you all, as you consider the airport expansion master plan, that you dig in and find out and do the preliminary cost studies to see what that would take before we poison members of, of communities of color and, and impoverished community members. Thank you.
There's nobody out there.
Anyone else wishing to speak in chambers? If not, we'll go to Ms. Capaletta.
Good evening, my name is Professor Lisa Marie Capaletta, I live at, they call me LMC, and I live at 1322 Belvin. Well, Councilman Baker, what do you expect? The, the city hall has mold, it's in the floors, in the walls, in the ceiling, and there was a massive cover-up to the point where you could see the moldy ceiling tile, and they refused to remediate it, knowing all those people have been sitting in there for months. So, so what do you expect, Council, Councilman, I mean, come on, wait, why would you, why should we care if we can't even make sure that our own city secretary's office is healthy? My goodness, you doubt Don Cahooty, you? And he's absolutely right, I know people in East Austin, and, and in San Antonio, and they dropped the jet fuel, and there are residents around there, and there's actually specific forms of cancer that happen as a result of specifically nearing airports, it's like a 30-second, a millisecond Google search. I, I also find it really interesting, just, you know, we vote for you guys, and you tell us you love the river, and, and you're an ecolog, you know, you love San Marcos, and just bit by bit, you just vote to ruin it. And it just, it's like the same song, second verse, who cares about the plebeians who've been paying property taxes? Let's let the guy from, or the lady from Houston, the guy from wherever, go ahead and do what they want. I find light industrial, it's like military intelligence, right? It's just a really a contradiction in terms. And, and what I really find troubling is the transparency of city documentation. You refuse to put the transcription of all of the speeches of these past public hearings specifically related to the, to the big, the reason why most people are here tonight, right? The situation with the smart terminal. You've got the letters in there, you know, and you could sit behind your desk and send a letter, but there's no documentation of the actual speeches that were given in your packet. And it's the same thing right now in your staff report, that it literally says speakers in favor or opposed. So to a city council member who's got a busy life, who's pulling it, they don't know what everyone's saying, who shows up, whether it's on Zoom or in that nasty moldy chamber, and that's the reason why some of you have asthma, or your eyes are watering, you get sick the next day, or you're all stinky, because you're in a disgusting, moldy city hall that I've been complaining about for years that Steve Parker covered up, okay? So I would kindly ask that, and I've asked them, and they've not answered me, they've been completely non-responsive. Put the transcript of the speeches up of the people who show up at public hearings in the staff report. You've got the people who are writing the letters, you've got, right now, it says here that there's transcript on. It's not like you're sitting there in a typewriter, and you gotta backspace and put the white thing in and undo it if you make a mess up, which a few of you in the audience or maybe on the dais remember. And it's not transparent. Go ahead, you know, Daddy, why does, you know, this town look like an armpit? Well, because Daddy just was a yes-man. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Hurry.
My name is Anna Juarez, 342 Newberry Trail. I just wanted to say, I do live near that area, and there are definitely people living out there, there is, there is a large community, they are spread out. But I would, I, I think the idea to do the study prior to any kind of development out there would be good. It says light industrial, and this is the first that I hear about it, but I did like Mr. Baker's idea about trying to do some kind of study on the, the air quality. So thank you very much.
Are there any others? We'll close the public hearing, and the floor is open for a motion on item 12.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Scott, second from a Mr. Gleason. Counsel thoughts, concerns? I'm gonna ask the question that I asked, but I was in error on, on the message board, and that is the, the cutout that's gonna remain P for public. If something happens and regulations change, the reason why that's a cutout gets smaller, because if it gets bigger, that's a whole different problem for somebody else. But if it gets smaller, and the applicant or someone else wants to buy whatever that is and come in and rezon that, maybe to LI, are we sure that it will come up, oh, we've got restricted covenants on the rest of the horseshoe, maybe we might want to consider that on, on this? I'm just afraid something's gonna get lost, because I've been doing this a long time, and occasionally I remember something that, we've had two or three people in those positions since I started paying attention in 1988. So that's, that's my, that's still a concern that I have.
May I respond by saying, I hope it does not take that long to amend the code, to take those bad neighbor uses out of light industrial, which is what's on staff's plate right now as one of our code amendments? So it might not be necessary? Will we remember-
I'd be thrilled.
Will we remember to put it in the packet? I hope so. But again, at that time, if and when that occurs, it'll be down the road, and our zoning district for light industrial will probably look different.
Well, I would just hope somebody would look at the, at the surrounding and go, oh, there's, there's covenants, maybe, you know, we'll ask counsel if they want to apply it to this contiguous park.
Yes, ma'am, as long as I'm still here, I'll do my best to make sure that ends up in the packet.
Thank you.
I, one, one, one question, it's kind of, I guess, almost a statement, just want a confirmation, that cutout really is because of the transportation, or the airport master plan and FAA kind of requires that space? Is that correct?
It's an easement, it's a runway protection zone easement, so it's an area that can't be used by anything, because that's where the planes take off and land. So you can't have any structures or even trees and things of that nature in that area, or it could be an issue for the airplanes.
And, and that's an FAA requirement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was, I thought it was discussed on the airport master plan.
And FAA has requirements that extend beyond the runway protection zone as well, so there will be height limitations on the property anyways because of FAA regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and was that protection zone, that's been that way for a while, this has nothing to do with-
A long time.
-the airport getting expanded.
Correct.
Even when that happens, okay. Or when that happens, okay. Um, thank you, and, okay.
Wait.
I, I, I look around, and, and you gotta do it when I'm looking this way, but it is your turn, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, uh, question about the air quality. At what stage of the game, or is it ever done, an air quality? Well, justified to do one?
Our codes wouldn't require an air quality study.
Okay, then we have to change the ordinance, or the codes, or something to be, to be able to do that?
If it's something that the city council wanted to have in our codes, it would have to, it would have to change in the development code or the code of ordinances, but it's not anything that I have familiarity with or, or understand, so I-
Just for some clarity, that's, that's why I was asking.
I just know that it wouldn't be required, because it's not in our code.
It's just, this town's growing so quickly, and things are going up so fast, I think we're gonna have to change the way we think. And, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Ventalian, when some of these questions were raised prior, we looked for studies of regional airports, there were some things that we looked for, and then I will address the purple monitor limitations.
That's correct, and I'll actually address the purple air monitors first.
Oh, good, you better.
You know, when that discussion was had at the Sustainability Committee, the city staff reached out to the capital area, the Council of Governments, CAPCOG, and their air quality manager indicated that the, the purple air monitors are really low-grade monitors that are good for, say, relative comparisons of kind of high-low, and that they're not designed, they don't have the capacity to identify sources, you know. Their thought is that the air quality, the particulate matter concentrations here locally in, in, in different cities are influenced by primarily vehicle use, concrete plants, agricultural activities, construction projects, and that it is really, really difficult, and I think even the council member, and a former council member, indicated that it really is a complex issue to be able to monitor something and say, you know, the, the basis of this result is the airport, as opposed to FM 110 or I-35 traffic, so it's really, these monitors are not designed to really do a specific source identification.
Well, I wonder, let's look, let's go ahead and look at 10 years from now. Have we tested, if there was a way to test now, because that area is booming, as we all know it, come back 10 years, go back 10 years further, and, and we can compare, hey, this is what happened from 10 years ago to today. I'm, I'm just curious, that there has to be a way we can start keeping up with it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, when you monitor air quality, and there are air quality monitors, you know, throughout Texas, that what you see is, as cities urbanize, air quality generally degrades. A lot of that, though, is primarily due to auto and vehicular traffic as the primary cause.
Yeah.
And that's about to boom?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and for the, for the moment, the, the purple air monitor requires electrical power and Wi-Fi.
Wow.
So, that's, that's what's needed to, to run those.
I don't know if you remember, about 10 years ago, the EPA was due to study through Austin in this corridor, and our area was tested, and the particles were only like 70%, and they keep validating that the trade winds that you'd get from San Antonio or Austin would change the reference that their monitors were showing out here, and that was taken out here by the airport when they did that. So I remember, you know, talking about this back then. So you'd have to do a completely different test, if you wanna see what the current ones are. But we, our traffic at the airport hasn't increased that much. So I mean, your references may be about the same, unless you grab it from highway traffic.
Are there any other questions?
Um, I don't, oh, may I?
I said, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Is it possible for Mr. Baker to tell us what he has ants in his pants about? Is that allowable? I think it was in response to Mr. Gonzalez's question on how we can be proactive in addressing.
And you've asked him a question.
Yes.
If he wishes, he may-
You better.
Come to the podium and respond.
Yes, so, yes, I acknowledge at, at that meeting that there were flaws in the level of quality that we could get through that CAPCOG agreement, but there was then asking, what are the more expensive options, right? Because what I was trying to kind of push towards, as, as Mr. Gonzalez was referring, is what is the snapshot of development doing today? What will it look like in 10 years? And, as we've seen, groups like the EPA are problematic when we look at their long history of environmental justice, right? And that's what we're talking about, is, are we putting impoverished and people of color in harm's way? And the way that you study that is by doing these kind of longitudinal studies, right? So you need to have data from today and data from the future to know, did this impact that we voted for have that effect? Did we marginalize and create environmental injustice? And you're never gonna know that unless you start to study the problem upfront. And there are concerns, you've seen places like Houston even deal with this now, where, you know, folks are, are living right near highways, and they have these health effects. So when we are so proud of FM 110 serving as this like great corridor and the expansion of our airport, and we don't consider the potential harm that those people living near there are going to experience, then we're, we're setting ourselves up for failure and for potential expensive remediation costs in the future, as well as healthcare costs for our residents, which we know healthcare is not something a lot of our residents can afford, right? So, you know, I, I had even recommended at that time that we maybe even look into university partnerships, or, you know, large health organization partnerships that can maybe offset some of those costs and partner with us in a longitudinal study, to speak with the members of Ms. Juarez's community, or people that leave it, live in Reedville, Maxwell, or even the folks that are adjacent there at the Gary Job Corps, right? Do healthcare studies with those folks, find out our baseline, and make sure that the development that, that is being voted for isn't gonna hurt people in the long run, and that if it is hurting people, that we can track the data and do something about it after the fact. And, and as, you know, borrow a coin or a phrase from Ms. Garza, be intentional about it, right? And to spend our tax dollars in a way that is to the benefit of the community and, and their long-term health. Thank you.
Well said, sir, I appreciate that.
Yeah, of course, thank you all so much for the opportunity to, to speak again, I really appreciate it.
Keymark.
Counsel, anything else? The good news on this one is that the airport's already there, and whoever's working to develop this knows that there's an airport there. We're not putting an airport next to places where-
Yeah, but just keep in mind that airports bill to handle 747s if need be.
Not right now.
Okay.
Not right now.
Not anymore?
Not right now.
Mr. Vigno, let's go.
All right, Ms. Garza?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
The motion passes five to two.
And that concludes our public hearings?
Yes.
All right, then we're gonna go back to item six. Mr. Vigno, if you will read that one, and then Mr. Staff will explain.
Mr. approval of resolution 2023-83R approving a 10-year lease with JLFH Investments LOC for the lease of space for the Women, Infants, and Children WIC program office at 705 Linda Street, New Braunfels, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute said commercial lease agreement and declare an effective date.
I'll make a motion to approve. All right, Mr. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor Chase, Staff Assistant City Manager. This item involves a lease for our, our New Braunfels WIC office, wherein we're moving from an old location to a new location in the same city. Uh, we learned late today that further negotiations were needed due to our current landlord changing his mind about whether or not we needed to pay the full month of June rent or lease payment. Uh, so to accommodate, our new landlord has allowed us to move in later in June, at the very end. And so that requires some adjustment in the dates on the lease, and we also found a typo that needed to be corrected. Uh, and so I wanted to pull it out of full transparency because the item attached to the agenda is a little different in that, in those ways. And so we just ask you all to consider the new lease, um, with the new dates, the typo corrected, and then also, we would then need to ask Ms. Reyes to sign a lease amendment changing the effective end date on the current lease by that one month. That is it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions? Mr. Gary, this all cool with you?
Works for me.
All right. All right, Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Mayor Houston, can you please confirm who motioned it?
To approve.
To approve, it was Mayor Houston, okay.
Aye.
Thank you for that. All right, Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prater?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
And Ms. Garza? Motion passes six to zero.
All right, so I think we're on to item 13.
Consider approval by, by motion authorizing out-of-city utility connection request for water service by Keith Buck on behalf of David Welch for an approximately one acre more or less located at 1321 lazy lane.
Counsel, I'm seeking a motion on this one.
Oh, sorry, must approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Ms. Gleason, are there any questions? Not? We'll vote.
Okay, Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prater?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza? Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, item 14.
Review a staff presentation, hold discussion, consider approval by motion, additionating a review of the development agreement, providing direction on, on topics for discussion with the developer and authorizing negotiations with Franklin Mountains San Marcos One LP if desired to amend the smart terminal development agreement.
Okay, counsel, I need a motion to, um, do we do a motion on the week? Yeah, this is just discussion, isn't it?
Just consider approval by motion.
Yeah?
Who it does? I'm sure that's-
And it'll be a staff, staff presentation first, if you, it's providing direction on topics for discussion with the developer.
Okay.
And approval by motion.
Let me get a motion to put it on the floor.
Motion to put it on the floor.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, is there a second?
Mayor, Counsel, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. At your regular meeting April 18th, city council directed staff to prepare this discussion item and postpone the associated zoning change request for smart terminal, next slide. The smart terminal development agreement was first approved by city council in 2019 for approximately 900 acres. In January of this year, city council approved amendments to the development agreement to increase the acreage, add development waivers, as well as add increased development standards for the project. Last month, city council approved the annexation ordinance on first reading, and the applicant has requested postponement of the second reading of the annexation ordinance to align with the zoning change request. I don't have a slide for this, but I wanted to take this opportunity, we had a question about construction of utilities and infrastructure and how those costs work. The city's wastewater master plan includes an impact fee identified regional wastewater facility in the area of smart terminal. So we knew that growth was coming out in this direction, whatever it, it may look like, um, and we had been planning for a wastewater facility in that area that would be paid by the city. However, for the utility lines to serve the development, the applicant would be required to pay for that construction to take the utility infrastructure to and through the project. So they have to take it all the way to the other end of the project, and that's where we have CCN boundaries. Our water certificate of convenience and necessity, it's our service area, our water service area is more on the west side of the development, so our water infrastructure wouldn't go all the way across, but the wastewater infrastructure would, would feed the entire development, so they would take that to and through at the cost of the developer. And y'all have heard of oversized participation agreements, that would be one area where the city may pay for some of the infrastructure, but it is to make the pipes larger to accommodate any other development that may happen in the area. So as we're talking about costs, know that the developer's responsible for what they need, but there are some city costs that, that will happen in the area in the future, and we just didn't want anyone to, um, wonder why that was the case. Next slide, please. I have a handful of slides in the presentation that I reviewed at our meeting on April 18th, so I'm not planning to spend a lot of time on them, but if we need to go back, they are available. Hayden, if you could skip ahead two slides, please. There was a question on the message board about the third item on this table, which is the 70% increased total suspended solids removal. And the question was, what is required by code? Removal of TSS is only required in environmentally sensitive areas such as the Aquifer Recharge Zone, the San Marcos River Protection Zone, and areas where an applicant is reclaiming water quality or buffer zones under certain conditions. So it's a very complicated answer for what does code require, because it depends on particular situations, and our engineering department reviews those details as part of that watershed protection plan that's part of the development process. Um, all of that to say that because this area is not in a environmentally sensitive area, the 70% is actually above and beyond for the majority of the property that's not in the floodplain. Hayden, let's go three slides to the administrative amendment details. As a reminder, the applicant, after hearing from neighbors, submitted an amendment to the development agreement, which was eligible for administrative approval. The amendment was approved prior to our meeting on April 18th and included a 100-foot buffer to adjacent residential properties to the north, a limitation on where additional height is permitted for outdoor storage, and an increase to the width of buffer zones. So they're doubling the width of the required buffer zones that are required per code for environmental features. In their request, the applicant agreed to 75% TSS removal as well as discharge controls. However, those items were not eligible for administrative approval, so they're not in that final agreement, but the applicant has indicated that they are willing to do those things. Hayden, three slides ahead for me, please, and thank you. Throughout the annexation and zoning process, staff has received comment letters, which are included in the packet. Many of these letters included questions, which were addressed in a frequently asked questions document, which is available on the city's main webpage. A few of these letters, though, included specific and technical requests, which I'm going to be presenting in the next few slides. Next slide, please. While the development agreement includes a list of permitted and prohibited uses, we heard that some of the uses would maybe be better on one list or another, so we have listed those in the packet. We have not fully analyzed all of these uses, um, so we don't have a staff recommendation really for any of these items at this time. But this slide and the next slide include what uses were requested to be moved on that existing list or added. Next slide. Next slide. There was a request to increase the buffer to residential properties in the ETJ. Currently, the development agreement includes that 100-foot buffer to properties directly adjacent to the development to the north. No buffer is proposed where residential is across the street, and no buffer is required by code because the properties are in the ETJ. The second part of this request, too, is the use of plants native to the region. And then the third bullet there is to incorporate a transitional protective yard, which is in our development code, section 7224. I included some images in a part of the table from the development code on the slide. Wanted to note that if the residential uses existing were in the city limits, the applicant for the industrial property would be required a 20 or 35-foot buffer with a six-foot wall or fence. The applicant is currently required a 100-foot buffer, and while a fence or wall is not required, it could be constructed by the end user if they so choose. Next slide. The next request is to increase the total suspended solid removal from 70%, which is in the development agreement, to 80%, which is the requirement for the San Marcos River Protection Zone. We've provided a map to show you the location of the San Marcos River Protection Zone in relation to the smart terminal project. Next slide. This item is decreasing the cut and fill allowed in the development agreement. Currently, the development agreement allows 15 and 20 feet. That is administratively approved, and all requests, even if by right, I know that came up earlier, um, things that are allowed by right still get approved by staff, so it is administratively approved. The request here is to reduce cut and fill to eight feet, which is what's currently in code. Anything over eight feet requires city council approval, which y'all approved in the development agreement, the 15 and 20. Next slide. Because the 2023 smart terminal development agreement amendment incorporated a portion of land from Cotton Center Agreement, staff included a provision which would maintain some of the required parks that were required in Cotton Center. Parks are not typically, not ever, required for industrial or commercial development, but the development agreement for smart terminal requires eight acres of publicly accessible parkland. This requirement, excuse me, this request is to increase the amount of parkland dedication to 264 acres. We were given a calculation of how this number was created, which took into account a variety of residential properties that are surrounding the smart terminal, but the calculation in that manner is unusual, because typically a development is only required to provide parkland for their property and the residential that they are building within their property boundaries. And again, parkland is not required for industrial or commercial development, so no parkland would be required if the smart terminal were to develop following the regular code requirements. Next slide. This slide addresses impervious cover. There's a request to reduce the gross impervious cover to 60%. Currently, the development agreement permits 70% gross impervious cover, however, the development code would allow 80% for a heavy industrial property in city limits. There's a request to include a 150-foot setback to floodplain and tributaries of the San Marcos River, as well as locating the allowed pockets of 80, of 90% impervious cover as far away from these areas as possible. I asked engineering what the typical buffer requirement is, and I got an, it's complicated answer again, it ranges from 25 feet to 200 feet, depending on a variety of factors. And again, those are reviewed by the city engineers. Next slide. These requests for reduced noise are to reduce the noise level at night and at residentially used property lines below the 75 decibels, which are permitted in the development code, and the development agreement points to the development code for noise enforcement. Next slide. There have been requests to complete certain studies prior to zoning approval. First is the stormwater study, which we call the watershed protection plan, and it is required at the time of plating. Right now, without knowledge of who the end user will be, it would be a very challenging study to complete, to know exactly where impervious cover will go, how big future buildings and parking lots and things of that nature will be. The second is a traffic impact analysis. Generally, a TIA is required when a certain number of vehicular trips, if that threshold gets hit, then the developer is required to do a TIA, a traffic impact analysis. The development agreement for smart terminal requires a TIA with the first plat. So that's something that is above, above and beyond what code would require. Usually, you would get a couple plats into your development before you would hit that trigger, so we will know what the traffic impact is upfront. Next slide. This is a request to remove the outdoor storage height waiver completely. Currently, the development agreement allows the 80 feet of outdoor storage in the area that circled in yellow, and this was part of the administrative adjustment, administrative amendment, which was approved last month. Next slide. This is a request to implement a wildlife corridor around riparian areas, this is not something that our development agreement speaks to. Next slide. The request to implement the dark skies ordinance, I just wanted to let counsel know, this is something that our development code already considers. Our code is based on the dark skies model, so for example, light trespass is not permitted. We view, review a photometric plan for all new developments to make sure that their light is not trespassing onto someone else's property. And we also require things like full cutoff light fixtures that make sure the light points down and not up at the sky. Next slide. And this final request is for right-of-way dedication. It's actually covered in the development agreement. As development occurs, the city will get right-of-way through the plating process. So all those red lines that are on the plan that are currently roadways, the applicant would be required to dedicate the full right-of-way for those when the development gets to that area. And this request was specifically for that road with the yellow arrow, apologies, you can't see that very well, but on the right-hand side of the map, um, for a Caldwell County transportation plan connection. So we had already incorporated that into the development agreement, as it's on the city's plan as well. Next slide. No discussion or direction is needed on this slide, just in full transparency, staff has identified some additional items to discuss with the developer. If the development agreement is open for negotiation, we will be bringing these items to their attention. Um, if the development agreement is not open, we will have these conversations with the developer anyways, things like the term needing to be changed, you heard that earlier today in one of the presentations. We're going to take care of that. Um, if it's open, we will insert those new exhibits into the agreement, get it recorded again with all of the exhibits in one place, but right now, having it in two documents is not an issue. So this is just some additional items that we will take care of. Next slide. I'm going to turn this over for city council discussion, but this slide includes the points where staff is seeking direction from city council. The first question that we would like you to answer is, does the city council wish to initiate review of this agreement? Do you want us to have conversations with the developer, or would you like to leave the agreement as is? If city council wishes to initiate review, we would ask for direction on the topics that I just provided a brief summary on, and I'm happy to give more information if we need it, um, to give us some guidance as to what you would like us to speak with, with the developer. And then the third point is, who would you like to have those conversations? Would you like it to be staff with the developer, take it to the council committee, or have the full council be part of those discussions? With that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Is there anything from anyone else? Okay, and counsel, what we're looking at here, there is a development agreement, and the word agreement, it means just that. It means it's something between two parties, and so anything to change in the development agreement would have to be agreed upon by the city and by the, I'm calling the company. Um, just like we heard about the meeting earlier, uh, it's an agreement. Uh, agreements are only agreement if it's agreed upon by both, both, uh, entities. And so we had talked about some things that we would like to ask, uh, the company to, to, that we wanted to discuss with the company and ask them if, if they would consider talking about changing the agreement for some things and say yes or no. Uh, and so that, that's where we are. So, um, for the first question, do y'all want to start looking at a list that we would like to ask them about? I'm seeing a yes here. Yes. All right. Okay, all right. So that's a yes to perhaps create an ask list, and then we'll go through, um, the list here in just a minute. Do you want to go ahead and look at, uh, item three? And there's three options there to allow staff, either the committee or the full council. And I'm just gonna jump in here and say, full council is not something that I would recommend. Uh, first off, anything from the council has to be a majority of the council. So if we had one person bringing something up and the rest of the council didn't agree with it, or at least three, then there's no point in, in even going there. I think that would just be too, too much, uh, and or, it, it would just be too confusing, and I think it would just get too complicated. So I'm gonna go ahead and throw in my, my two cents on that one, that that I just don't think is, is feasible. As much as one might like it and might sound good, I just don't think it's, it's, it's feasible to try to do that. So, let me get, Mr. Scott.
So, I mean, I understand your point on that, but would you be object to maybe people who have, the, the comment was made, the people who haven't been on- have, the comment was made, the people who haven't been on it, get a couple of those people on it?
Well, now, you're, are you talking about the committee?
Yeah.
Because I was talking about the full council.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the committee.
Talking about the committee, yeah.
I'm, I'm with having staff do this, that we give direction to the staff so that we know what at least four of us wants to do, and then we give that direction to the staff. And the staff has already done a really good job of getting those other items that you mentioned, the, the minor amendments to the development agreement, and then the other two, two items, I think. So I appreciate very much the staff staying on this, if ideas have come up and have worked with them on those items. That's where I'm going to land, is for staff to do this, once we figure out what it is that a majority of us want, want to even look at it.
Okay.
So that, that's my position.
Makes sense.
I'll second that.
You're, you're good with that? Okay. Let me find my little chart here.
I'd go with that too, ma'am.
Yes.
I'm a no. Typically, ma'am, I really lean on your, like, all the knowledge and insight you bring when it comes to like procedural things and what's going to take long and the schedule and all of that, but I know it's complicated and I know it's chaotic, but I feel like it's just too important of a topic to not have like a full council discussion. I also think it's a little bit disrespectful towards our neighbors who may feel that they want the whole council to talk about it, right? Because they're locked into talking to three individuals. And so if they, if they want to continue to give feedback, it's like, it's, they're going to depend on, I don't, I don't even know why I have to explain this, but it just makes sense to have the full council.
They're limited in having conversations outside of the public meeting with a public agenda.
Right, but we haven't provided a space for them to have dialogue aside from that. Does that make sense? Like?
We've had hours of citizen comment, and I've listened to every word.
That's not a dialogue, right?
True, but that's, that's input, and that's what we're looking at. We're working with, we're using their list to start with, and then I'll ask council if you have any other items. I think Mr. Gonzalez might have one.
I think I'm comfortable with the full council, or to Mr. Scott's recommendation, a committee of other folks.
Okay, so I've got you down for full council or maybe committee?
I'm for staff handling with our requests.
Yes, and the staff handling will be with what we come up with?
With our requests.
Okay.
I'm okay with staff handling it, but if we do the committee, I would request that Mrs. Garza and Mr. Gonzalez be placed on it.
We're not talking about the committee yet?
If we do, I just, okay.
I, I wouldn't support the, the full council because it's just going to open another kind of worms. If one of us don't show up, it's going to take super majority to, to pass it. Did I understand correctly?
To pass what?
No.
Wait a minute, to pass what? To vote on the development agreement? No, it's just a majority? Is that correct? Or is it, is it?
But I have support of what I think it was Mr. Shane came up with, and so did Councilman Mendoza, of two of the council members to participate in the discussions. But to answer your question, no, ma'am, I, I don't want the whole council in the conversation.
Okay, and but you're a no to the staff also? You want to do a committee?
No, I'm, I'm good with the staff.
You're good with staff? Okay, thank you. Okay. And so we've got six of us saying yes, well, we want the staff to do this, and, but we will come up with the list, so.
And when are we coming up with the list?
Right now.
Okay, I'm just going to say again. This is just such a big deal, y'all, and our neighbors have devoted so much time, effort, and energy, and this is not what they want. But as usual, I am outvoting.
Well, it's not like we have not heard from the neighbors. We, we have heard from the neighbors, and we've seen lists, and I have read, read all the comments that have come in, things that people are interested in. So that's where we are. So I would say let's start working through the list. Are we looking at the, the first, if we could go back to the list and start with item one?
Mayor, we didn't take a vote, maybe we don't have to, on the, the other two new members if it goes to a small committee?
We just, I just said, we've got six people that are saying, let staff do it. We're, we're not going to do the committee.
But we might have seven that might agree in the committee.
The question was, are we going to have?
I think it's because the way that you posed it was like, vote on the committee first, instead of do you prefer the committee versus staff? And so I think that's where it's a little bit confusing.
So I, I think the way the agenda is posed is providing direction, and I thought those three points, I think there was at least a majority that said they want staff to negotiate. So I think that's, once you have the majority providing direction, I think that settles it on that issue.
Okay, so I just want to clarity, so if between those three, the majority of you guys want to do, you would prefer staff over committee? Yes?
Yeah, and one of the reasons is, no matter what committee we create, it's only going to three, three council members. So one way or another, that's not going to be a majority. And then so I think that's what, I think that's what, part of what the problem is being with, right? The development agreement went through, and a couple, four council members decided they wanted to change some things in any capacity. That's why it's better off letting staff kind of handle, handle it, in that we tell them what we want to see requested, and then we'll see what they agree to.
Well, and let me back up a step. Even if we were doing the committee, it would still be, we're all going to determine what we're going to talk about, and that direction goes to the committee. The committee would not be making the decisions of what to negotiate on, unless you wanted them to. I'm not recommending that.
And to be clear, whether you choose the committee or whether you choose for staff to negotiate, it'll still come back to the full council for your voting on the, the agreement.
Correct.
So just wanted to make it back there.
It's going to be a majority of us requesting it, and then we're also going to get to see this, whatever, however this plays out again.
Correct. So with, with, with either staff negotiating or the council committee, just want to be clear that all seven of you would then be asked to vote on whatever that negotiated agreement is.
And can propose amendments at that time?
Yes.
We still have some input then at the very end.
That's correct.
No, the input is, is, is right now, whether it went to staff or whether it went to committee.
But when it comes back?
It's wide open for, I'd say wide open. We can, we can have amendments, but if it's an agreement that, let me back up. We say we want staff to handle this. That means still, they're going to be asking the applicant and determining if the applicant is willing.
Correct.
What comes back to us will be what they're willing to change.
Correct.
And that's what we're going to be voting on, because there's no point in us coming up with stuff that, I mean, it, it would be too late to come up with stuff. I misspoke.
Would you do a post?
I'm so used to saying you can make an amendment, I just, I.
And that's correct. There's no, there's no agreement to amend if it's not mutually agreed upon by the parties to do so.
Someone could make an amendment, but it would have no purpose.
Unless it's mutually agreed by the.
Right. Which means we have to come up with it in advance, like today.
I'd like to call, get some support from my colleagues, Mrs. Juarez, Mr. Baker, for a couple minutes, just to give us some input. I saw you had just hands up, if that's okay with my colleagues.
What I'd like to do is, can we, can we ask them to limit it to three minutes?
Well, I'd give them two. You're being courteous.
I'd give them one, but.
You, you may, you may limit the time if, if, it's your discretion to even have them up here, so you can also limit the time at your discretion.
Well, I'm going with the three because that's a timer that we have.
Okay.
That sounds good. Do, are we still, can we?
We can.
Let's do it.
Thank you so much. Ana Juarez, three forty-two, Newberry Trail. And yeah, I just wanted to emphasize, you know, yes, we have had an opportunity to do these three-minute monologues, and you can't believe how incredibly hard it is to try to, you know, there's so much left off the table. And really, what we want is to have a conversation. We want to have a back-and-forth discussion, just as you all, you know, imagine if you had like two minutes each to talk, you know, to make your point here, especially when it's something this massive, right? I, I think as you, as we've just been discussing other kinds of, of things, and even the, the current development code, I, I wonder when this code was first developed, was, were, you know, were the people writing that thinking about two thousand-plus acres in rural areas, right? Or were they imagining the, you know, what most other manufacturing and HI kind of zoning encompasses? I think this is just such a, you know, it's the first-ever, most complicated, largest kind of thing. It's just so different that I really feel like, and I, I think I can speak for, for everyone here who's still here, that they would, that, that we would like to sit down with the, with the council, and if it has to be a subcommittee of the council, you know, council members, at least not those who are already decided against, you know, any kinds of amendments or who are, you know, have already decided to approve. So yeah, I, I would love to have, you know, a committee like that, a subcommittee like that, and one in which we could, you know, meet with you and have discussion. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I'd just like to let the record show that you talked about dialogue. To remind Ms. Juarez, and you remember that I did have a three-hour discussion.
That was amazing.
With you, Ms. Donovan and Ms. DeBrock.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak again. You know, I, I'm really reflecting on the diversity, equity, and inclusion training we did, where we talked about issues and relationships and building consensus and working together as a community. And, you know, to, to the mayor's point of, you know, we've, we've heard the community, I, I would challenge that wording because the community is asking for something that is not being upheld. And, and if, if we're truly hearing and listening to what our neighbors want, we would make that space for them. You know, I, I just think that staff is what got us to this point, and, and I, I'm trying as best I can to not say that in a disparaging way, but our community members were frustrated with the work that had been done by staff, with what had been presented by staff, and what continues to be presented by staff, with mis-typos and misdirection and things like that still included in some of those documents. And so, you know, that's part of why we're asking that you, as a full-body deal, and go into these negotiations, as complicated as it might be, you all do that every single city council meeting, right? And to Mr. Gonzalez's point, an amendment could be made the night of. Wouldn't it be better to have done that work ahead of time instead of ending up back in the same position, where you are granted an opportunity to get last-minute information from staff, like we saw at the last meeting, saying, here's how much money you can look at, without all the extra calculations and costs and opportunity for the community to weigh in and digest that? I think that that's what we're asking for, is that opportunity to be in a real dialogue and not, you know, yes, ma'am, it's very applaudable that you had that three-hour meeting, but wouldn't it be better if the whole council heard that discussion, right? And, and that's what we're talking about, is giving everybody the same level of information and privilege and opportunity to hear what these fine community members have been working so diligently on, right? And I, I truly thank, you know, Councilmember Gonzalez and, and Mr. Mendoza for, you know, giving us a little bit of extra space in some of these meetings to ask these things. So thank you.
Okay. I have one more comment. Ms. Garza.
I just, I just wanted to explain this real quick. The reason I asked for clarification as to whether my colleagues chose option one over option two or three is because of the way the question was framed. So, ma'am, I'm sure it wasn't your intent, but whenever you ask questions that have multiple-choice options and you stop the conversation when my colleagues bring up the other options, it might be perceived by our neighbors that you're, you know, using your role of meeting manager to frame the question in a way that generates your desired outcome, and I don't want people leaving with that. So that's why I asked it in that way, not to be like, you know, contrarian, like, oh, we got majority, and now I'm trying to flip it. That's just FYI.
But it was one of three choices.
Right, 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 right.
And once I get six on one particular choice, they, they gave me what their choice was, so I.
Right. We, I mean, I just wanted to clarify that. I'm not interested in discussing it further.
I'll go around the table again.
No, we're good.
Nope, I'm going around the table again. Mr. Prather?
Option one.
Okay. Mr. Scott? It's the, the little one, or two, or three?
Thirty-three. Bullet points under three.
Staff committee or full council?
I would like to start with staff.
Okay. Mr. Gleason?
Staff.
I'm still at staff. Ms. Garza? I haven't changed. Okay. And Mr. Gonzalez?
Full council.
Oh, you've changed. Okay. And Mr. Mendoza?
Committee.
Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Any second choice for me?
So now we have three. First staff. I'm sorry. Four. We have one for committee, and we have two for full council. Is that correct? Okay. All right, so we're still at a majority of four for staff, but regardless of which way we go, we need to know what it is that we even want to ask the applicant. And so that's where we need to go now. If you have additional items, tonight is the time to bring it up, because if the developer agrees to have a conversation and potentially change the development agreement, we will know that before it comes back to us. So next time, there probably would be no percentage in bringing something up the next time.
I'd like to make this simple. With the requests that have been made, can we just say, let's make an ask of all of those? Of course, we know it's a negotiation. We don't know what the outcome will be, but at least we can ask.
Right.
And that's all I request, is just to make the ask.
Same.
Same.
Hold on.
Did you say a little?
Whatever was listed down, and again, we're just asking, we're not making demand. We're just saying, would you please? They can definitely say no to us, but I just want to put that out there, since it's been expressed to us, and we've got the list.
Yeah.
Let's just ask. And again, this is negotiations. We may not get the answer we want, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
Mr. Gonzalez, did you say yes to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now I need to look over this way.
I mean, I.
Wait, wait, Mr. Prather had his hand up.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Okay. Now, Mr. Gleason.
I'm fine with asking, but I brought up the two that were the most important to me previously, and they're on this list anyway, so that's, that's fine. I mean, ask for the world, we don't know we're going to get it, but I guess we can ask for it.
It's our task.
Mr. Scott, it's right? You're, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. But Mr. Gonzalez, I think maybe you had an additional one?
Yeah, I think I did.
Had something to do with big red trucks?
I forgot what it was, ma'am. I thought it was something about the fire station.
It was.
Oh, okay, yeah, if they weren't willing to pay for a fire station.
Or if they are willing to perhaps, what, what they might be willing to contribute towards, but we're already talking about.
A fire station being.
No, I, I think there's already two sites that they're donating. Is that correct, Mr. Hernandez? Okay.
I was hoping to go a little bit further and beyond.
Would you talk into your microphone? Because you're talking.
I was hoping, hoping that they would go a little bit further than just donating that piece of tract.
Like maybe kick in some funds for?
I'm always for that, ma'am, you know that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
And there is a point that Ms. Reyes made about fire stations and funding. Ms. Reyes, did you, would you like to make that point again about the companies that will, will actually be in this location?
Yes, so once, because we don't have who the people are or the companies are that are going to be developing within this tract, once we know, then that could be another option for us to go back and work with those specific companies to negotiate towards the cost of construction of a fire station. So that is something that would be an option for us to ask as, as this property develops in the future.
So whether or not we get it here, we still have some more opportunities, which I hope they would be willing to kick in. Eh, you get a few thousand here, a few thousand there, eventually you get a million dollars. Anyway, so I'm not predicting that, I'm not promising that.
She's being prophetic.
Yeah, but we will-
You're being prophetic.
I'm, I'm, I'm being hopeful.
But we will ask the developer too. I mean, we will ask and just say, hey, is there any, any consideration for that? And so, and see what they say.
Okay, well, that, I didn't need, I didn't need all these pages then, but I was ready for whatever options y'all, y'all wanted to go with, so.
Yeah, I just want the record reflected, the mayor made a fantastic chart.
I did.
I'm serious.
Everything on the list, it was a work. Look, who wants what? I was ready.
It was good stuff.
All right.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I hate to ask this, but on one particular land use, the electrical substations, you know, we did have discussions with our electric utility, and because electrical substations are a necessary part of our infrastructure, we have substations throughout the city, that, that's one that there was a question from staff or concern from staff that that be included. Certainly, again, it's a necessary part of our electric distribution system, and to ask us to not build any electrical substations within this entire area was just a concern for our, our electric utilities. So, I just wanted to pass that on.
Because we, we do have someone in the last, what, four or five years that needed more power, and they, I believe they kicked in some pretty serious bucks for that, and we're grateful for them to do that, and they've got electricity, so. Okay, anything else? Because this is-
Should we strike the electrical substation for now?
We strike that from prohibited land uses.
Staff can, staff, staff was planning to do some analysis of these if they end up going forward to the developer, so I think that would be one of our recommendations, is that we do that at the staff level, that we need substations to connect the grid, so we would take that one off and make a note to council when we come back that the reason for doing so.
Right. And maybe, maybe instead the prohibited is carefully placed. So, that might, might be the thing. Okay, so that one comes off.
Would it be okay if I reiterate what I heard?
Yes.
Okay, so, motion, motion on the table was just to start the conversation, I don't think we have a motion to approve. I think we would need a motion to approve. We are going to, move this down so I can see my language, we are going to initiate review of the development agreement. Staff will negotiate all of the topics that were presented this evening, as well as ask the developer if they are willing to contribute towards the fire station construction.
With, with striking-
With striking the electrical substation.
And hey, if they want to kick in some money on that, I'd be thrilled.
Well, the rest of them have to pay for your transport, you could pull it.
Well, they would pay for the routine things, this would be far the substation. Yeah, no, they gotta do the routine stuff, just like any other developer.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there, there wouldn't be anything different there.
Because I have my mind on my mind.
Mr. Trevino, do you have what the motion is for us?
Yes.
Okay. And, Mr. Gary, is there anything else that we need to know or do before we close out this item, sir?
I think you got it covered, as long as staff understands the direction they need. All right.
All right, then I believe, Ms. Trevino, we are ready to vote. All right, Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero. All right, well, that closes out that item, and council, do y'all want to take a break?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, let's come back at 9:55. This is one of those bio breaks, not a-
Not a-
We have returned to our council meeting from our break, and we are now at item 15.
Full discussion regarding the Parking Advisory Board Recommendation Resolution The board's support for an amended booting ordinance and provide direction to the city manager.
Ms. Reyes, do we have someone who wants to talk to us, or do I need to start with it?
I've got it.
Wonderful.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chase Stap, Assistant City Manager. So, for these next two agenda items, I wanted to give some brief background on the recommendation resolutions that have been submitted to you by the Parking Advisory Board. Staff has recommended a change to our parking ordinances. This is the first one, which would streamline the process used to install vehicle immobilizing devices, also known as boots, on vehicles for unpaid parking citations. The process currently described in our ordinances is much more complicated and restrictive than really is called for in the law. The Parking Advisory Board is expressing support for these ordinance changes. Because I think somebody's about to ask, I'll go ahead and tell you that these updates to the booting ordinance will allow staff to install a boot on a vehicle when the vehicle has been issued three or more parking citations that have each gone beyond 15 days past due. The owner of the vehicle will have 10 days to appeal the installation of the boot with municipal court. If they do not do that, staff then may install a boot without obtaining a court order. That's the key difference from what's in the ordinance now. Another key change is that it will allow staff to deliver this notice of potential booting device by affixing it to the vehicle rather than using certified mail, which we found to be pretty ineffective. So, secondly, for agenda item 16, in order to be responsive to resident and business owner input and the-
Hold on a minute. Don't we need to wait to get to 16?
I can hold that if you want.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that's it for item 15, that's the gist of it. Thank you.
All right, so this means that finally, after acquiring them in the 90s sometime or another, we'll actually start using them?
And we're actually looking into newer technology of boot, boot devices that can be unlocked with a smartphone-type thing, so it's easier for our staff in and out, and we're done, and better for the consumer.
Well, yeah, everything would, would, would be faster. Council, this is just a discussion as to whether we want to move forward with this new streamlined ordinance?
I think it's something like this to protect the, oh, I'm sorry. I think this is something good, because I get complaints all the time from business owners downtown that they have, they, like, okay, example being, one of my neighbors are barbers across from the old Century Tel building that is gone now, and they're having customers leave them, often, customers that have been there for 15, 20 years because they can't find parking, and they consistently see people park there and just don't care and leave it there for days. So, I think this is a good step.
Our staff is, is really vigilant with issuing the tickets.
Right.
Unfortunately, the ticket recipients are not as excited about paying their tickets as you might imagine, but however.
Is there another fee to take off the boot? I think it's 50 bucks.
Yes, sir, there is a fee to remove the boot. I don't have that information with me, but it's currently in the ordinance.
You'll see it if we bring this forward.
So, the mayor and I are on that parking committee just as liaisons, we're non, non-voting members, but I do believe it was like around 50 to 70 dollars to take the boot off, if I remember correctly.
I was gonna say 50, but I-
I think it was 50. We, we got it on the presentation.
That's fair.
It was like 50 bucks.
Yeah.
The one thing I was going to throw out is Dr. Ray has patiently waited all evening, and she chairs the Parking Advisory Board, and I was going to ask her if it was all right if she had anything she wanted to add.
And while she's approaching the podium, just remember that you, this, this is a self-inflicted wound for, for people. You don't get a boot unless you have ignored three tickets for an extended period of time.
And I think it's three tickets in a 12-month period.
I don't, let's not start talking about details, Mr. Gleason, because we'll talk about that when we see the resolution. Ms. Ray, that's right.
Rosalie Ray, 201 Ridgewood, San Marcos. I wanted to clarify a couple of things that we talked about in the board, which is, one, you don't have to have fully paid to get the boot off, you just have to talk and make part, and make a payment plan. We want to be really clear that in our dream world, we would make no money off of this, because it would mean that people could follow the rules and had learned them. It's a way to sort of say, hey, you have consistently done this, and it is not the thing you're supposed to do, and we haven't been able to get in touch with you, you haven't contacted us, so this is sort of the physical wake-up alert, but I want to really sort of shout out Sam, the Parking Enforcement Manager, that she's been incredibly clear that this would happen sort of at a time when the person who's booted could get to the municipal court to talk to them.
Right.
That we're not doing this at 5 o'clock on a Friday, and then you lose your car all weekend, and that I would just wanted it to be in the public record, that all you have to do is talk to them and make a payment plan. You don't have to pay everything off in that moment to get it off. And also, for the public record, the mayor did say that if this passed, her Jeep would be the test vehicle to show off the fact we had a boot.
I'll be the photo op. I have to go through the car wash. I'd forgotten about that, thanks for the reminder.
If I could just say-
Oh, I knew others wouldn't at the time, so, yeah.
If I could say, thank you for making it payment plans, I think that's, I think that's great stuff, thank you.
Yeah, but, but we're being, I'm going to say, we're being kind about it, like, like Dr. Ray talked about, so. Other, Mr. Prather?
I was gonna say, usually I'm always somewhat reluctant about these kind of things, but the measured, kind approach that I'm hearing, I'm like, yeah, if it's becoming a problem and you're becoming a problem with your parking habits, then you have to have a dose of reality sometimes.
And you know, once first two or three happen, word gets around, they'll just, they'll be the pioneers, and I'm, I'm hoping that, that things will, will get better and tickets will be paid more. Okay.
And they would operate for your time and input, thank you.
Yeah, and to everyone who serves on the parking committee.
Yes, yes, she's doing a great job as chair. Okay, so, we're, we're all ready to move this forward and, and see what the ordinance looks like when it comes back? Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
See what the booty looks like.
Ray, roll. Shane Scott. Ms. Trevino, would you please read item 16 while I try to ignore what happened over here?
Full discussion regarding the Parking Advisory Board Recommendation Resolution 2023-02RR-PAB, extending parking to four hours in low-demand areas downtown and provide direction to the city manager.
Okay. Now, Mr. Stap.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, for this item, really in order to be responsive to our residents and business owners in our downtown area that, you know, they've been giving us input and we've been listening, and to better make use of our limited parking resources in the downtown area, staff has presented to the Parking Advisory Board and made recommendations related to the time limitations for certain areas down there. Based on staff observations and community input, we'd like to bring an ordinance revision that designates certain areas that are on the outer perimeter of downtown as four-hour parking rather than two-hour time limit parking. These are areas that are often, that often see low parking demand, and this is feedback from staff down there, and very few citations being issued for parking over the two-hour limit. So, again, if you approve of this direction, we'll bring ordinance updates back to you for consideration in a future meeting.
Okay, and the map was put on the message board, but you'll see it again if we all agree to bring this back. Council, that we're, we're trying to use the, the carrot method here to get people over to the four-hour, maybe they go home for lunch or whatever, come back, instead of just violating the two-hour, which doesn't mean we're going to quit looking. The Parking Enforcement people will, will continue on.
I did want to ask about the, the, forget the name of it, that transports our citizens-
The Ecap?
Thank you, the Ecap. Will we request for us to increase, not visibility, but for them to drive by this area?
They're already in this area.
Can they increase their drive, and just because we're increasing the timeframe for them to be able to park there, can we just?
They're, they're constantly circulating through. We, we don't even put a time on the one, when you're going to be at this stop-
Yes, ma'am.
-because they're just circulating, but if you're a block off of the regular route, you call them.
Okay.
They come get you and they'll let you know whenever.
Just want to make sure they have that, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I guess they can know you're going to have signs up there, this is the two-hour one, this is the four-hour one. I don't want people getting confused.
Yeah, there'll be some expense to it.
We're good. I'm good.
Sounds great.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Well, I've seen some movement of parking.
Well, and these are areas that I consistently, is the first place I go looking for parking, because it's available. I mean, it's, it's pretty consistent, and staff was the one that pointed out these areas being underutilized.
They're, they're the ones that know.
Yeah, because they, you know, they know that, so.
One last question. Is there a cycle for this? Does it go off your record after a year, or is it three strikes you out for your lifetime?
The, no, so, the parking citations are civil citations, not criminal, they don't show up on your driving record or anything like that.
But, let's say that I parked three times this year, and I waited for next year to park again, and those three times, do you consider, would you start the time clock?
Is there an age limit on a citation?
Are you back on booting?
Yeah.
We, we finished that one.
I'll get back on, I don't know how in the heck, but I did.
And I don't know the answer to your question, sir, because I'll have to get it.
Yeah. It's late, Mayor, it's tired.
Plus, if you pay the parking ticket as you should, you kind of don't need to worry about how many of them are out there going on your permanent record. All right, so, we have asked that those both be moved forward, and we will await when those return. Any estimate?
The booting ordinance is basically done, we've been ready with that one, I'll need to ask staff about the, the four-hour, and it's pretty simple, I'm hoping June-
That's, that's-
Second meeting.
That's true, but-
Oh, that's, that's only one.
But, as, as Mr. Gonzalez noted, we'll need to change out some signage, and it would be good if that was done before the fall semester starts and get people used to what's in, in what area, assuming it passes. I don't want to presume too much.
So, the first, that one meeting in July, yeah. And I'd like to see this done at the same time, so we kind of do public awareness, hey, there's, here's an option for you for a four-hour period and a window, and by the way, here's the Ecap too, kind of like a full, full, full push on, on all of these things that we're working on.
Okay, so, we are hoping that maybe, maybe June, but they'll, it'll come back when it comes back. All right. Onto item 17. Ms. Trevino.
Full discussion on the disaster declaration, including but not limited to the eviction delay ordinance and provide direction to the city manager.
All right, council, as I said the time before, it seems like it was time for this to come back. We're, we're hearing from apartment managers, what, what this is doing, and so I thought it was time to discuss. You've got some updated numbers in your packet, and so I'm just laying it out there to see where anybody might want to go with this.
Mayor, I'd like to excuse myself, I already turned in the proper paperwork for-
And the reason you're leaving is?
Not to appear as a victim party.
Because you own rental properties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bye, guys, thank you.
I'll just throw it out there, I'm for internet, and I wanted to thank Judge Prado and Mariano for all the hard work they do and for whatever additional data they were able to give us, so, I'm for moving forward in internet.
Okay, um-
And, and I'm sorry, just for my own, you said you're in favor of moving forward with what?
Forward to end, end, end.
To end, okay, I didn't quite catch that, thank you.
Good clarification.
But, but, what I, I'm looking for a little bit more information, is the eviction delay was, I don't know, if it's part of the disaster declaration or under that umbrella, do we do we have to undo the disaster declaration in order to undo the eviction?
I don't, I don't think so. I think, I believe the eviction can be a standalone, but if you.
I think it's the other way around.
But I believe it's a separate subpart of the larger declaration, so you can leave everything intact, but end the eviction delay, I believe.
Okay.
But conversely, if you ended the disaster declaration, the way the ordinance is written, then it kills this one.
It would.
That's correct. Yes, if you suspended everything, the eviction.
Okay, so there are actually both on our table, but it's the eviction is the one that has gotten the most attention, as, as y'all know.
And I saw on the packet, well, we, we know President Biden ended the federal. The state did extend theirs again.
Well, it's not ended yet. It's May 11th.
But, but he signed it and it's happening.
But the state one was to, to make sure governments weren't having like mass mandates.
It's got a whole different reason. Yeah, he's, he's leaving that one in to say that he can control what we do.
Well, is there any other like strings attached to if we ended the emergency declaration? Like, alright, this is a question for Stephanie.
I think that question was asked at the last one and what I, I'll tell you the same thing I did last time, is I'm not aware of any current funding opportunities or anything like that that's related to us having a disaster declaration.
In fact, if anything, the talk is starting to take away money potentially, is what we're all hearing.
That's what you're hearing as well.
I think it's, you know, it's time to put the COVID emergency, not behind us because COVID can easily be an evolving thing and be right in front of us again, but where we're at is a community, a country. Um, I think it's, I think it's time to end the emergency declaration.
So you're in for ending the emergency declaration and so, and that means the eviction goes away, so you're good with both of those?
How does that, so let's say the majority of this council votes to rescind the eviction moratorium, how does that impact folks like immediately afterwards, right? So do the folks who are under the impression they have three months, does that, is that null and void? Is it like after this date? Like how does, in terms of the timeline? And what notices are gonna be given to our neighbors?
That's, that's one of the things that we need to talk about.
Yeah, we'd be asking for directions.
Because I, I, I don't wanna just yank the rug out from other people.
Right.
Right, and then just like a follow-up since, um, well, I guess you were around during that conversation. You just like weren't Michael. So, in October 22, I brought up the following concerns that many of our neighbors shared, that they were unaware of the ordinance and that they felt strong-armed or misled by their landlords. For example, they were given notices that didn't align with the ordinance. And in that discussion, we kinda talked about how, um, the ordinance lacked teeth and/or like a very clear, uh, a very clear mechanism, haven't even enforced it, right? It's like, do you call 1-800, uh, I think they got the wrong eviction notice? And so I just wanted to bring that up as well. If we couldn't even communicate that to our neighbors then, my concern is like, how are we gonna communicate whatever our decision is and how that impacts them? Moving forward.
Yeah, the landlord will.
This is extremely important if we're cutting this off. We desperately.
Right.
And, and that's kind of a separate issue from, you know, just repealing any ordinances or other directives versus how you wanna go about publicizing it, I think is more of a, a public relations, a policy-type matter.
That impacts my decision, right? So, mm, I need to know the implications of rescinding it tonight. Does that, does that break clarity?
We can't rescind it.
Right, tonight is, just to be clear, it's only direction to the city manager to, if there's an inclination to, uh, basically rescind everything and, and everything, city manager prepare a packet for the council to consider at a future date.
And then you'd answer that question?
Well, let's go back to your question again, because I, you asked a question about how do we let people know?
Okay, we'll, we'll just squash that since you're right. I'm getting ahead of myself. My, I guess my question is, what are the implications of rescinding it? Like in terms of their timeline?
For, uh, without having the, reading it line by line, I, I think basically that means landlords can immediately initiate under state law, the requirements under state law.
But can we put an effective date into?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Those, you can put an effective date, you can also direct city manager, you know, when, how you want this publicized and things of that nature.
We, we, we generally do a grace period, like before the state did, we did the, the no texting.
Correct.
You know, when, when you're driving or no whatever.
Delayed effective date or something like that.
I think we did 30 days. We put the signs up early. We put the date on the signs. We, we did what we could. Now, I understand what Ms. Garza is saying is we're, we're probably not gonna reach everyone, but we'll have to do the best we can.
Would we still need the emergency declaration? Like we said, 90 days from now, let's, you know, we're gonna stop this eviction moratorium, but if we ended the emergency today, we would not have that. That, that's correct. It's, it's by virtue of the emergency declaration or the disaster declaration that you're able to do the, the eviction moratorium. So they're, they're linked.
Right.
So if they wanna do a delayed effective date, it would behoove them to keep the disaster.
For everything.
Right, right. Well, we'll just keep them tied, just keep them tied together.
Together and have everything be.
I think would be the, okay.
Well, I, I'll just throw it out there now. I won't be for, in favor of anything more than 30 days. There's a lot of issues with if we delayed this for 90 more days, then you're getting into move-in time for the student.
I was gonna make is with the move-ins in August, I think we've gotta do something before that or that's just gonna really complicate things.
And the other part of that, too, is Judge Moreno and Judge Prado are still gonna have a part to play unless there's still gonna be a process to do an eviction. It doesn't happen automatically. So they're gonna be taking some of that into account.
And plus, they're hearing about it today. It starts the rumor.
Yeah, since everybody tunes into city council.
Until it comes on the next agenda.
Depends on if the, maybe if the media were to pick it up and cover it and.
Perhaps, I mean.
They, they need a front-page headline every day.
At the almost daily record.
I'm, I'm just gonna bring up something that I don't think everybody is privy to. I appreciate y'all for supporting me with allocating the rental assistance money earlier this year. Initially, I was under the impression that it was live, but it's not. And I don't know if Ms. Ray, I don't wanna like misrepresent the.
Yeah, I'm gonna have Mr. Pentalian just correct me if I'm, if I'm incorrect, but we are contracting with the VR3T organization to get that together. The contracting is, is moving forward. They were originally going to start that in June, but because they were having some shortages and things like that, they're looking at more of an August start date. Is that correct?
Uh, I think what they were trying to do was to time the beginning of that program with the ending of some of their other funding that was providing for emergency housing. So they would go from emergency housing and, and that, those funds would expire and then that, that, these new funds would be available for that same clientele. However, they are looking at possibly accelerating that to June to serve new customers that aren't currently getting that. So they're, they're working towards maybe accelerating that to begin in June.
And that's, you said like emergency housing, that's specifically rental assistance and?
Yes.
Yes, that's the rental assistance.
Okay. I think that's like another piece of the puzzle in terms of like what resources our neighbors have and to prepare for this, um, situation.
But the BR3T is for renters also. It just renters and homeowners, where the next program would be renters only. So there's already funding in a program in place for people, this would just be.
That, that's where my, that's where, I'm kind of confused because I, as part of city council, I'm on the community action board and almost every one of the directors during their strategic planning meeting that I went to was talking about how one of their biggest needs, and they had this survey and their survey, their community survey, it was like one of the biggest needs is rental assistance and housing. And I feel like they're one of the most, just like, one of the most prepared and proactive entities when it comes to knowing what their resources are. And they shared that there is no resource for rental assistance, which is why I texted Stephanie and I was like, hey, we voted on this. Is this available? So I guess I'm just like confused, like is there something right now? Because I know the state rental assistance lasted a whole, like, two days.
Yeah, it was, it was less than the time that they had originally advertised, but.
Yeah, the, the current program that BR3T is running with the funds they have available to them provides for like security deposits, utility deposits, but it, but it doesn't actually pay for rent or utilities.
Oh, gotcha.
So that's, that, that's the difference there. Now with this new program with the emergency rental assistance, that will kick in. But again, it's a matter of them possibly doing a soft opening in June. They, they do have some capacity issues. They're trying to get a temp in to help run that. Uh, but certainly, you know, once August hits, they're gonna be ready to go into full advertising mode to make that available to everyone.
And for the record, I'm very supportive of efforts to help people that are struggling, especially with rent utilities. There's a lot of people that are in need. I just think doing it under the guise of the, uh, the authority given under emergency powers is just, I think we're skating on thin ice.
It's, we, we've stretched that to a.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we're interested in this coming back. When do we want it to come back? Next, next meeting?
Yeah.
Ms. Reyes, is that possible?
It, it's possible. That's correct.
Okay, we'll, we'll try.
We can do that.
Okay, and then at that point in time, we can determine what the date is, whether it's 30 days, 60 days, or whatever.
That's correct.
Whatever campaign that we need to do in terms of information and.
Okay.
And we'll make sure our caption is not so restrictive that you can't have certain flexibility on that kind of things.
Okay, do we, do we wanna talk about a number now so that it's in the packet and people aren't surprised? 30, 60, whatever?
I'm, I'm at 30 days because I just keep getting back to that move-out, move-in time period of students moving in potentially July 1st.
No, no, those change over in August.
Uh, I, I know, I know quite a few students who moved in here in July because they're, the other people moved out in June. It was available. They moved, they got lucky. It does happen, so. Um, and the more opportunities that someone has earlier on, I just don't wanna wait till like August 1st, like that could get pretty chaotic. I kinda like to play out a little bit before we move on.
So we got 30, 45, 60?
Uh.
Too short.
I would want 60, but.
If we could, if we can see it in the middle of May, July 1st would be 45 days. I would be fine with that, but not a, a day longer.
Our next meeting is June what? 2nd?
May 16th.
May 16th is, would be the next meeting.
And then we'd have 45 days from there. I just would like it to be kinda cleaned up by July 1st.
July 1st?
Yes.
Would be your next meeting. You only have the first, one meeting in June and then July 3rd.
Right, and this is a one reading and action goes into effect? It's not an ordinance?
Right, if it's not an ordinance, then that would be a.
It's one time. Okay.
Do we even need the full?
Okay, hold on, Mark. Ms. Wilson, you're at 30?
If we can, if we can do it at the next meeting, I'm okay with, I wanna, I would love the date certain be July 1st.
Forty?
45 days if we do it next meeting.
Okay. So, so we're aiming for July 1st? Y'all good with, good, good, good? Okay, so we're looking at July 1st.
And Mayor, the, uh, Ms. Trevino's reminding me that the, the declaration may be one thing, but the, uh, the eviction.
Oh, is it an ordinance?
Item is an ordinance, I believe. That was done by ordinance, the eviction moratorium. So that would be two readings.
Yeah, it's called the eviction delay ordinance. It was established by ordinance.
Yeah, that's right. It was.
To undo it?
And it.
Okay.
Yeah, because you're changing an ordinance, so.
Well, but even if it passes the first reading in mid-May, that still gives us 45 days to get the word out.
Yeah, we can get the word out, but it would end up being 30 days.
So we're gonna draft for 30 days from the, from the second reading?
Mm-hmm, okay.
And I had one other question, too. Does it require the full council to remove the disaster declaration or can the mayor do that on their own?
If, I believe the mayor issued it, did you?
I issued it, yes. And then, and then I got back up from council afterwards because it was an emergency situation.
Yes, the mayor's declaration is only good for, I think, seven days and then council has to.
Yeah, I think council picked up on it.
They had to ratify it.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
No, I, I, but even, even if I had the authority to undo it without y'all, I wouldn't.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
You can't go wrong.
Okay.
And so I did hear July, did we hear July 1st?
They wanna, they wanna bring it back. What I heard was you wanna bring it back at the next meeting, so May 16th for first reading. Second reading within happen on June 6th.
But the effective date.
And then they want the effective date to be 30 days from that, so.
June 30th. Well, let's just say June 30th, because that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, June 30th.
So effective date would be June 30th.
Uh, did we all agree on 30 days? Because I was thinking more like, oh, more than that, but.
Well, it's 45 days from the first reading.
But we all agreed on that?
I had.
I'm like zoning out. I'm keeping it real right now.
I had a majority. Yeah?
My, my big thing was if, we need to give landlords, if this does play out, if there's potential issues, if they need to clean up apartments or remodel after all this is done, that they have some window before August 1st to get all the preparations done and whatever may need to be done before August 1st.
I think they call that make-ready.
Uh-huh.
I think they call that make-ready.
Make-ready, yeah.
Okay.
So effective June 30th.
So I've got a majority that we're looking at June 30th for the, okay. Interesting that you said taking away the disaster declaration actually takes away the authority for the eviction ordinance.
Michael said that in last meeting, too.
Just because the, the eviction ordinance was, um, it was tied to, so I would have to look at it. Uh, now that we're talking about, are you thinking it might have a, a clause in there that basically?
If this goes away, this goes away?
It terminates on its own, possibly.
We'll give you time to look at that.
Yeah.
But yeah, if we could do it in one reading and get it done.
Right, if that, if it terminates on its own effect, because it's tied to the declaration, that might, may solve it. And that's a very good point that you reminded me of that.
So, I think we are where we need to be and we will see that next time. And I don't know where, uh, I'll text Mr. Gonzalez to come back. I was gonna say, where's Mr. Gonzalez?
Mayor, I just wanna say it's really awesome to have Mr. Aguirre back, so welcome back, Sam.
I'm, I'm gonna say something about that in a minute.
Thank you. It's a, it's a real privilege to be here and to serve you.
Yeah, I was gonna wait till the end of the meeting to, to do that. If y'all are okay with that, then, then, then we can just kinda celebrate.
I know.
I know, we all are. Okay, so now, uh, I believe we're to item 18. All right.
A, section 551.07 to the Texas Government Code, real property to deliberate the sale lease of poor value of city property located on Lime Hill Road. B, section 551.07 to the Texas Government Code, real property to deliberate the purchase or value of real property regarding potential use of eminent domain as contemplated by the Riverbend and Riley's Point Development Agreement. C, section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with the city attorney regarding the law and legal matters related to the development process regarding the smart terminal project and development agreement.
Okay, and these items are also posted on our work session for 3 o'clock agenda and we had those discussions and completed that, so we do not need to go into executive session at this point in time. Uh, so let's move on to item 19, Ms. Trevino.
Yes, consider action by motion or provide direction to staff regarding the following executive session items held during the work session and/or regular meeting, just as stated above.
I'm sorry, did you just say what I just said?
Stated above.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, so for item A, we gave direction to staff. On item B, we gave direction to staff and on item C, we held the discussion. So we are now to question and answer session with press and public. Uh, Mr. Baker's here and I believe he had signed up. I will also ask if anyone in chambers wishes to ask a question. Uh, and Ms. Capoletta signed up. You have three minutes to ask your questions. We may or may not be able to respond, but responses can be sent to you by staff. We just need to make sure that we have your email. So go ahead and ask all your questions.
Great.
The timer starts. State your name.
Yes, Maxfield Baker. My email's supersimple, bakermaxfield@gmail. If any of y'all need to reach out to me about these as well, I'm totally down to talk. So what I wanted to present here is actually regarding your discussion with the police officers and the renegotiation of the contract. And, you know, I, I, I am admittedly pretty disappointed in the lack of questions on the forum and then the lack of questions that happened afterwards. I have a whole page of questions I would have asked if I was sitting in your seats. And, um, some of those are regarding some of the points that the chief brought forward. You know, in, for instance, um, you know, it was mentioned that these third-party arbitrators are being used, you know, more effectively and how that kinda impacts like the staff that's on board and, and forfeited time and all this kinda stuff. But I've asked the chief in private emails and, and from the Criminal Justice Reform Committee to give actual data around these things. How much is this costing our budget to give officers forfeited time as opposed to having them take their time off? Is it helpful to force them to take that time off when it's surrounded by tragic incidents, right? Like part of when you read the academic research around officers losing it or acting unprofessional comes from being worked too much, right? And so if we're giving them the option to forfeit their time to stay on the clock and help keep staff levels okay, is that at their detriment, right? help keep staff levels okay, is that at their detriment, right? You all want to look out for our police officers, we need to make sure we're not overworking them. Um, I've also asked the question of staff to, oh, God, this is so rainy, um, to in some way kind of account for the, uh, you know, this, this like culture change that he's talking about, right? He's saying all these people are leaving and retiring in droves. Is that because there's a new chief in town, quite literally, right? Is this culture now being held accountable for things that they weren't held accountable for previously, which I, I've mentioned is, to me, as a citizen now problematic when, who was our former police chief, director of staff, is now still overseeing all of that, right? Um, and so, another thing that I had here was, um, about the forty-eight hour review before their statement, right? Um, I had mentioned this in CJR before, that why aren't community members given that exact same opportunity? That would be kind of a middle ground, a negotiation of, of that intake process that affords citizens the same rights as, as those staff. But when you look at some of the, uh, concerns around the forty-eight hour review, you'll see that, um, those testimonies are often switched. The last thing I want to end with is, um, the, the stuff about going into their file and not doing promotions now based on, um, you know, previous reprimands, will that be retroactive? Will the police chief look at who is currently corporals and sergeants and then turn around and say, hey, you actually are not fit for this, because we wouldn't promote anybody else into this position now with the same level of reprimands in your file?
And I don't.
Mayor, one of those is really easy. The rest, I would, I would ask for time to be able to dig into some of his questions, but the, the last question regarding retroactivity of performance review, it's, it's no, it's moving forward.
Okay. All right, so if that's all that we can answer, and some of those I don't believe are really questions, so, Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Okay. Um, anyone else in chambers wishing to have a Q and A with the press and public?
Yes, uh, my name's Noah Brock. I believe you probably all have my email address by now.
We can find it.
Yeah, exactly. Um, most of these questions are sort of directed towards city staff, city manager, but I'm happy with answers if anybody can answer them, um, and they're all related to smart terminal. Will council have more than one interaction with city staff about direction for development agreement negotiations? Will individual council members talk to staff as negotiations move forward? How will the public be kept informed of this process? Will city staff go to council and play the middleman between council and property owner, or is this just staff talking to the property owner? I want to make sure that the staff recognizes that our itemized list was prioritized. Will that information be used when negotiating with this property owner? And to put this into perspective, we're asking council, so we've brought this itemized list forward, who is then asking staff to ask the developer who we've already asked. So you see this as just this big circle now. How will these asks be presented in a more significant way? Because we've tried this on our end, and so we're using all of these avenues that we can to try to make this change in this development agreement. So, what's going to change this time? How is this going to be more significant? How is it going to actually make a change? Because that was our concern with direction to city staff. I completely understand why it's city staff doing this negotiation. You all made very good points about that, but we were frustrated with city staff that this hadn't happened already. So that's our, our holdback on this. So we want to make sure that this kind of negotiation is actually in our best interest. And so that is really concerning to us, because we've been kept in the dark through all of this. We'd send stuff to city staff and not get things back, or we get a response, it's not really answered. So I just wanted to kind of point that out and ask those questions, so, thank you.
Do you want to start, or do you want me to?
I mean, the one thing I want to clarify is that staff did not negotiate the development agreement, a council committee did. So that was, there was a council committee that worked and staff facilitated, but it was the council committee that worked on the development agreement first. And so it was with staff and the, the council committee. And so to say that it was just only with staff and the developer, that's not the case, because there was the council committee. That, that's all I'm saying. And I think Mr. Baker and Mr. Gleason and Mayor Houston were part of the discussions with staff in terms of what to go ask the developer. And so this time, it will be a little bit of a different dynamic, because it will be based on all the asks that y'all said, and then staff going and working one-on-one with the developer on that. So it's not going to necessarily be with the council committee. So that's, that's the difference between this time and last time.
And I just want to, before we get any further, we have the public informa-, uh, the Open Meetings Act. We're not going to reopen the discussion on this item. Uh, we can answer some of the questions, but some of them may have to go to staff afterward. We cannot reopen this item and rehash it all over again, so, uh, also characterizing why we did something, that, the public record stands as it stands during the discussion, so I don't want to re-characterize what was done. If you just want to give factual information about what's going to happen next, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, what I was going to say is I think all those questions were, or most of them were actually answered during our discussion. So I think that's where we are on that. Anyone else in chambers wishing to have Q and A?
Hi, my name's Annie Donovan. Um, I just wanted to thank you all for considering the community asks to reopen discussions with the development agreement. Um, I do have a few questions, um, and they may be for Mayor Houston or for Ms. Reyes. So since staff will be looking into negotiations with, for the smart development agreement, is it possible for us to meet with staff about the community requested amendments? Um, which staff members will be involved in the negotiations? And if that is to be determined, when will that be decided, and how will we be notified of that decision? I understand staff has a lot on their plate right now, but would it be possible for us to meet with staff in, in question to be able to explain the reasonings behind the requested amendments, um, if they need further clarification? Um, as it was mentioned earlier, three minutes isn't enough time to really share, you know, our reasons behind many of these things. And then is there anything we can do to further assist staff, um, regarding these asks? Regarding council's involvement with negotiations, will there be any? If so, what does that involvement look like? And if there, and if there will be any specific council members speaking with staff that, um, will that information be publicly provided? How will transparency with the public and community be maintained? And then once the negotiations begin, will there be discussions between staff and council, or will staff have full autonomy to make decisions in the negotiations? And I just wanted to note that we still feel left out of this, you know, despite the impact this is going to make on our future. Um, so we want to make sure negotiations take our needs into consideration and not just the city staff's. Thanks.
You talk about three minutes. It may be three minutes at a time, but last time, people actually spoke for nine minutes, because we had citizen comment and the two public hearings. So it was more than that, and we've had this at multiple meetings. So the three minutes is in, in bytes, but, but we heard much more time than that. Uh, we have emails. You know what list is going to be discussed. We have said that we are going to have staff do that. We're not going to be individually talking to staff about directions on these things. We have said, we have decided on our list, which was y'all's list in its entirety, and so that's where we are, and at some point, a, a report will come back to us as to where that stands. Am I correct on all that?
And, and that, of course, will be in an open meeting.
Absolutely.
Open to the public when council.
Open meeting, properly posted.
And, and that would be, you know, because we got direction from the full body, then we wouldn't be taking direction from one council member to negotiate a certain thing. It, we got it from the full body to go and ask for all, so we're going to go and ask for all. And then anything, so, so to answer your question in regard to, do we have full autonomy to get, to make these decisions? No, because we're going to be bringing it back to council and, and saying, okay, this is what we negotiated, this is what their developer, if anything, is willing, if they're willing to change, and we'll bring that back for consideration to the council. So, and it would be in an open meeting, as Mr. Aguirre just talked about. Um, so that, that's how it'll work. It'll, it'll probably be Ms. Hernandez and her staff that will be the ones primarily, and they have been involved in the P and Z and here, so really have a good, I think, well-rounded understanding of some of the questions that have come up and the concerns that have come up, to be able to speak from a place of, of understanding with the developer of what can, what, you know, might be a more, um, agreeable or, you know, satisfactory conclusion. Sorry, it's late.
Yeah, and if you've got more information, for example, maybe why something is on the request to be prohibited list, we have a lot of that from y'all already. If you have additional information, who should they send it to?
You can send, you can send it to us. I mean, Noah sends, sends the CMO executive team and, and Ms. Hernandez, and that would be great, if you could just.
And a deadline?
Do we have a deadline?
Um, I would say maybe by the end of this week. I mean, certainly Amanda will be sending them information relative to what you, we put in the presentation, so, uh, I doubt that we'll be able to meet anytime sooner than the, the end of this week, but certainly in the next few days would be ideal.
But no later than hard stop, close of business Friday?
Uh, yes.
Thursday?
And if there's more time, we'll let you know. All right, I, I just hate to give a hard stop, but I think Friday, five o'clock, you know, if, if forced.
All right. Okay.
So we said close of business Friday kind of is the.
Does that mean, like, just 5:00 PM?
Five o'clock.
Yes, yes. And thank y'all for your input and, and information. We know it's a, it's a very, you know, big topic that's close to your hearts, and, you know, it's, it's something that I know the council has listened to as well, and we've, we've listened to, and so it'll be something that we'll be able to talk with the developer and just kind of see where, where things go from here, because it will need to be a mutual type of thing.
Okay. Is Ms. Capoletta on?
Yes.
All right, I don't, there's not anybody else in chambers who hasn't spoken, so, Ms. Capoletta, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta, live at thirteen twenty-two Belvin. Donovan, know your place. You're just a citizen, a peon that lives across the street, and your life's about to be ruined. Why would you ever expect interaction? And, and that's actually conducive of the statements of your attorney. You know, I fought five years or more for this interactive process, and I don't appreciate him characterizing this as not an interaction process with the press and, and public, and I want to put that out there. Um, I, you know, I just find it really, and, and the, the rules keep changing every time we come to this juncture of this part of the meeting, because I've been attending this part for years, and, and the rules just shift, which further reinforces my, my opinion that, that, that city council and city staff want very little interaction and want the citizens to know their place, even if it's across from an armpit of Futural Industrial, which they won't live there, they live in their nice houses, you know, and, and those of you who've been flooded out should know better. I, I find it really funny that you guys are like, ha, ha, ti, hee, hee, we'll just get a thousand dollars here and a thousand dollars there, like it's a coffee shop junket, right? Like, I'll throw in the tip, you buy the mokas. And I'm not understanding, and my question is, why are you not paying for the entire shebang? Because everybody knows that Virginia with Smurf and those of you who are pushing this through, we, we're going to figure out why that is soon enough, and you're going to lose your council seats as a result of it. Everybody knows that that developer will go away because he cannot get his insurance without those fire stations. Everybody knows it. That's the white elephant, the purple elephant in the room. Why are you not forcing him to pay? Because if I'm a small business contractor, I run a painting company and I need insurance, I'm not going to ask my neighbor to pay for it. I'm going to pay for it. And you're, you're asking this public, who can barely pay their property to, I thought mine, I had mine until I got my bill, and my jaw dropped. You're asking us to pay for a multimillionaire. My question is, what is the final drive-out price that staff has on right now for those fire stations, that station? And that's number one, and it should be on the tip of your tongue, Joe. My second question is, why are you not forcing them to pay for the whole shebang? Why are you expecting the poor Hispanics, whites, African Americans of this, of this community to pay for this guy's show? And I'll sit and I'll wait your answer.
So the, the data that we provided, and I provided this to Mr. Brock as well, the estimates provided by Chief Stevens, it's a range, of course, because we're talking about, in the future, but in today's dollars, construction costs out there for a new station between seven point three and twelve point three million, with the cost of.
Thank you, Mr. Staff.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Staff. I would like for the council members to tell me why they're not making him pay for the whole shebang. I can get the rest of that from you later, Mr. Staff. I want them to be on TV right now. Why is he not paying for the whole shebang?
You know, I don't know if, I think we've had the discussions.
No, Sam, you're running interference.
Ms. Capoletta, we're going to cut your mic if you don't stop.
You're not going to answer, because you're not going to answer.
Ms. Vino, please cut her mic.
Typical, typical.
Thank you.
If, if individual council members feel like they want to go there, they can answer the question, but, uh, you had discussions that were part of the actual posted agenda item, when the development agreement was first amended, and any discussions tonight, and so now, oh, you're being asked to get into your motive that wasn't part of the record for the, uh, actual posted agenda item, so it's up to you all, council.
You know what, just to leave this part of the agenda.
So that.
There's some questions from the press and public.
Put her back in attending.
It's to answer questions. It's the new dawn of the new.
Ms. Capoletta? Thank you, Ms. Vino.
So if, if, if a member feels like they want to answer that, uh, you're welcome to, but it's, it's just, be mindful, you had a discussion where the public was here, and, and now the public is not here. To get into your motive, you already expressed your views on the development agreement, uh, and by the way, tonight was primarily, um, to, to reopen, you know, reopen the agreement and renegotiate points. So now you're talking about your reasons for supporting it after the public has left here. So some questions can be answered, but they're generally factual-type questions, and if you feel comfortable answering it, that's fine, but I don't think you're required to.
Anybody wish to speak? Uh, Mr. Pantani?
Yes, um, just to both of those questions. First off, and I appreciate Assistant City Manager Chase Staff speaking to the fire costs in the range. Uh, that information on, uh, fire station costs, um, the detailed information was included in the FAQ as part of the April 2023, uh, update. It was updated very shortly before, uh, the last, uh, discussion item, and I know that there was some new information that had not, uh, been made public, but that, uh, was cleared up, and that information is in the FAQ. As far as, you know, the, uh, fire station costs not being a requirement in the development agreement, uh, I will let you know that city staff requested that during the discussions. And again, remember, this is a negotiated agreement, we need their concurrence to do that. So, uh, they, they, um, committed to donating the land. We could not get them to donate, uh, the actual fire, the, the hard, hard cost for fire station construction. I think City Manager Reyes has been very clear that, uh, you know, we are zoning, uh, and, and going through annexations as a different process, but as part of the development agreement, uh, which is, again, a separate process. We did ask for that, they chose not to do it. In the future, uh, once the land is annexed and zoned, uh, that will give us the ability to do, you know, chapter three eighty agreements with companies that are coming in, and as part of those negotiations, we do have the opportunity to ask certain companies to provide funds for fire station construction, uh, if, uh, they want to have incentives or any other, uh, maybe variances or things of that nature. So there will be additional opportunities. Council also tonight gave us direction to, once again, talk about putting those fire station construction costs back on the table. We will re-approach them, and, uh, you know, they will hopefully, uh, you know, take a fresh look at that question and, and respond back to us as to whether or not, at this point in time, uh, they're willing to commit to that. So, uh, that's my full answer to that question.
All right.
I just wanted to add, if you don't mind, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services, that money for construction of fire stations isn't something that's a code requirement. So code requirements include things like installing water lines and attaching fire hydrants to those water lines for fire protection, but the actual construction dollars aren't a requirement of development, so we do ask, but that's about all we can do, and it has to be in a separate agreement, because code would not require it by right. because code would not require it by right.
And their future tax dollars will be part of what helps pay for that. All right, um. Did we have anyone else signed up for Q and A?
No, ma'am.
For online? Then I believe at this point I will accept a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Mr. Venio, let's see who wants to go home.
All right, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
And we're getting out of here at ten fifty-five.